...of the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners Tuesday, October 24th. The order, Tony, are you ready? What is that beeping? Oh, never mind. Okay. This morning's vacation will be read by Reverend John Bennett with Trinity United Methodist Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Turner. All rise, please.
Let us pray. Let's live in God. May your goodness and love be present among us today. Come, Lord, and bless this gathering with unity, hope, and vision. Lord, we pray for unity within our community. We ask that you would build in us all the deep respect for one another so that your kingdom may be one. Lord, we pray for hope, asking that even as we speak of temporal things, your Spirit would stir our hope within our hearts and renew our faith in God, who created all things and delights in the faith of his people. Lord, we pray for your vision. May your vision fill the minds of each one here as we seek to do your will in the lives of this community. Hear our prayers, oh Lord, as we ask it in the glorious name of Jesus, who is the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much, Reverend Bennett. We appreciate that. And we're going to go to our item two on our agenda is approval of the minutes of October 3rd. The chair will entertain a motion.
I move for approval.
Have proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you. The ayes have it. Commissioner Goddard, would you read proclamation? And I'd like to call the Jared Dollar with Rotary Club, a Placa Sunrise, and all the presidents from the Rotary Club. Commissioner Pickens, will you meet me down there, you're a Rotarian also? And we will go to the podium. And I'm the president of the Interlocking Club.
Would you like to meet us down at the pit since you're a Rotarian?
Sure. I'll say on the end. I'll fall over you.
Do we read it?
No.
I'll read it.
Putnam County. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2017-79. Whereas Rotary International, founded on February 23rd, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, USA, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations. And whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary Club members comprised of professional and business leaders in over 35,000 clubs in 200 countries and geographic areas. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self", inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary, in 1985, launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the global polio eradication initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas, to date, Rotary has contributed more than 7, 1.7 billion and countless volunteer hours to the protection of more than 2 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is currently working to raise an additional 150 million, which is realized, or if realized, will be tripled by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation for a total of up to 450 million over the next three years. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical personnel, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas, in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than 8 billion to the effort. And whereas there are over 200 Rotary Club members in four clubs throughout this country sponsoring service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, health, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in their local communities and abroad. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County that October 24th, 2017, is designated as World Polio Day in Putnam County, and all citizens are encouraged to join Rotary International in the fight for a polo-polio-free world. Done and ordered, adopted this 24th day of October, 2017, the Board of County Commissioners. I move that we accept this proclamation.
We have proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
In a second.
Second by Commissioner Lible. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, done. Thank you. Thank you, Jared. Appreciate it. All right. And introduce all the presidents of the club. Okay. Or Jared?
President.
Jared, why don't you do it?
Go ahead.
I did spearhead. That means I just sent the email. Thank you, Tabitha, for getting it done. With us, we have Derek Kimbry, who's the president of the Palaca Noon Club, and Vernon Myers, current president of the Palaca Sunrise Club. And then, obviously Rotary has a, oh yeah. Interlocking Lakes, President Larry Harvey, and obviously, a lot of Rotarians in this room. We're very close to eradicating polio. As of September, there are only nine cases in the world. Afghanistan, Pakistan, and Nigeria are the only countries. And once we get it down to zero, it takes three years to be certified polio-free. Once that's done, it'll be the second disease we've ever eradicated from the world.
Other than would be?
Smallpox. And we'll be there soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, y'all gonna have to show each other some love and get closer together. Colonel, can you come in a little bit more? All right. Say Rotary.
Rotary.
Outstanding. One more time. There you go. Got it. Congratulations.
All right. Going to take a little point of privilege. Jim Toronto with St. John's River Water Management District would like to come up and tell us a little good news real quick. Go to public comment.
There we go. Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Jim Toronto, and I'm with the St. John's River Water Management District. And a few months ago, I came to you and talked about several programs that the district was moving forward with. Annually, we had $1.5 million that we were going to be offering to farmers, growers, in our 18 counties through a cost share program. Well, I have good news to say to you is that our governing board met on October the 10th, and we awarded $1.5 million to nine growers and nine farmers in the tri-county agricultural water management partnership area, which makes up Putnam, Flagler, and St. John's Counties. Those nine projects will be very beneficial to saving and keeping the St. John's River very healthy. In particular, one grower here in East Palaca, L&amp;M Farms. And if you can see the picture that I have presented, we took one of those very nice checks that we presented recently to the board and to the citizens of Putnam County. Here is $246,033.68 to L&amp;M Farms as part of our cost share. And what they are doing, in addition with the other growers, is we're looking at the reduction of 34 million gallons of water by using subterranean, should I say, sub-irrigation draining tile projects. You see the black pipe that goes into the ground? It's a lot more beneficial using it that way, and it saves on the evaporation of the water. Not only 34 million gallons of water, but 2,800 pounds of nitrogen and 791 pounds of phosphorus that potentially could have gone into the St. John's River. So, we're very pleased, and on behalf of our executive director, Dr. Anne Shortell, and our governing board, it's just an honor to be able to continue these great projects that we have with members of the community. So, I wanted to bring this good news today to the commission to let you know that an East Palatka business is going to reap the benefits of this in addition to other farmers to make our St. John's River healthier. So, I wanted to bring that good news to you. And there's any questions that I may answer for the board or anybody?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Please.
If I could.
Jim, I had an item F on our consent agenda in the pool today just to thank you and the Water Management District Director, Anne Shortell, for the East Putnam Regional Wastewater Treatment Facility Service Expansion Project. Coupled with what you brought this morning, we're really, we've got a great partner in the Water Management District. And I wanted, on behalf of my board, to thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll take that back to our executive director. She's very pleased with our great working partnership, and so is our governing board. And it's an easy process. We're all working together. We certainly can't promise money each and every cost share time to Putnam County or the recipients they're in, but it's been easy because the applications have been good, and they're very rewarding projects, and overall, they help our environment. So, I'll take your thanks back, and they're certainly heartfelt. Appreciate you, sir. Thank you.
And for the audience, and Commissioner Lible's correct, that's a $2 million project that runs the sewer pipe down to Paradise Point. That was one of the largest ones that Water Management has awarded. So...
It's the highest that we can award. Yes, sir.
So, Putnam County is well represented, and we do appreciate you, and we appreciate Water Management.
Thank you, sir. And also, the city of Palatka received funds this year in excess of a million, as well as Tater Farms receiving some additional cost share monies also. So, it was very, it's a great honor to be here today representing our district and presenting these funds.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Sheriff Deloach, I heard you have something that you'd like to share. So, before we go to public comment.
My original intention was to have this as an agenda item, but as you're all aware, during the close of our budget year is a very busy time at the sheriff's office and for all the county offices. So, as we approached the close of our budget, we actually had an opportunity, and I knew that we were going to return some additional money to the county, but didn't have a hard figure on what those numbers actually looked like. As we approached this budget year, I'm very optimistic about the future of our county, and I'm convinced that better financial times are on the horizon for us. With this in mind, I also knew that this was going to be one of the most challenging budget years that we would perhaps ever face. So, in light of that, at the sheriff's office, we are renewing our commitment to the board and to the county. I think that you could all agree that I came to each of you individually and promised you that I would bring you a meaningful budget that was based on needs and not wants, and that we would be very conservative with our county dollars. In doing so, what I have is a check to present to you in the amount of $866,000 to return to the county. As you're all aware, the sheriff's office has already returned $300,000 to the county from our 2016-17 budget. A portion of these funds were used to offset increased insurance premiums. I also promised to return an additional $400,000 at the end of the 2016-17 fiscal year, agreeing that these funds would be returned in my 2016, or 17 and 18 budget to help offset cost of improved employee benefit packages. This is an integral piece of an absolutely critical plan designed to stop the steady flow of highly-trained deputies fleeing Putnam County for higher wages in surrounding counties. Again, understanding that the sheriff's office has an obligation to Putnam County and our citizens, I also decided to forego several large purchases that were scheduled for the end of this fiscal year, or last fiscal year, rather, such as replacement vehicles, computers, and some building maintenance projects. This was done in an effort to return as much money as possible to the county in hopes that the funds could help meet the challenges in the current budget. As a result of these delayed purchases and other cost-saving efforts instituted by the sheriff's office, I'm returning $866,852 from my 2016-17 budget. From that comes $419,666 that the county may use to help ease the strains of the current fiscal climate here in the county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff, good luck.
We're going to give receipt of that check. Sheriff, you've got a term on you.
Sheriff Deloach, not only are you a team member, but you are truly a leader, and we thank you. And I tell you, this commission is, I speak for all of us, and I know everybody agrees, we are going to work with you equally. And this, we're off to a great start, and it's because of your leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much for being such good partners. I do also want to point out that there's an additional, I need my glasses. There's an additional $47,185.40 in grants and reimbursables that are included in that check that will come to you in the form of a budget amendment. These are grants and reimbursables from the federal government, and as you're aware, their budget year runs on a different time cycle than what our fiscal year does. So, I'm asking that that money will be returned so that we can reallocate it to those grant positions that it's funded for.
Duly noted. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything you do. Okay, now, we're going to go into our public comment unless anybody else wants to bring us another check. We're wide open for that today. Seeing nobody else, then, I'm sure there's going to be good things coming. Public comment. You do not have to fill out a blue card in order to speak, but this is a portion of the agenda to allow the citizens an opportunity to speak to those who you elected. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the board has received no prior information prior to this agenda. We will ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. We're not going to pull the trapdoor in case you go over, but we just ask you to wrap it up quickly after that. We have a long agenda, and we want to give everybody a chance to be heard. So, my first order of business, I'll be doing the blue cards. The blue cards are on the back wall on both sides as you walked in. If you want to fill one out, that would be great. If you don't, again, after the blue cards, you're more than welcome to speak. Our first speaker today will be Lauren Spies. If you'll come up, please. And your comment is about Dog Branch Creek cleanup. So, please, sir. Yes, sir, right here at the podium?
Hi, my name's Lauren Spies, and I just wanted to express my general support for the cleanup of Dog Branch Creek. The hurricane knocked about 15 or 20 trees directly across it, which impedes the flow. And it's the drainage of edgewater, the management areas, you know. And I just wanted to come down here and tell you I'm thankful for the work that you're doing, and hopefully, I know there's a project now from 207A to the bike path, which is upstream. The trees all fell from 207A to the river. But, you know, that end of the creek also impedes the flow of everything coming out, obviously. So, just appreciate your efforts and hope we can get the whole thing cleaned up, and thank you for what you're doing.
And let me say this. Also, Representative Bobby Payne was very instrumental on getting funding for that. So, thank his office too, as well.
Bobby Payne?
Yeah, Representative Payne.
Mr., if you can, Lauren, hang on just a second.
Yeah, please. Go right ahead.
Chairman. Item H on our consent agenda today deals with the Dog Branch Creek and a box culvert that we have gotten a grant from the Environmental Protection Agency. And we also will be looking for, I guess, to do some acquisitions along that creek so we can get in to clean it out. Our ability to have access to it is very limited. So, it looks like that's changing. So, it's on the consent agenda today.
Well, expressing my ignorance, this is the first time I've been to a meeting here, and I saw that on the agenda, but I wasn't sure when somebody like myself should, you know, put their two cents worth in. And, I mean, is it, is it something that, should I stay and listen, or can I contribute more?
Well, I'll give you this. It's $1.3 million. That ought to help get it done.
That's a start, huh?
Yeah. So, we're in good shape. No, I just thought it would be, you came forward, and I wanted to share it with you in case you were leaving.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Ms. Wilkinson, with Bobby Payne's office is right there. So, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you. Kimmy Upton, you are next. Good morning.
Ma'am, good morning. May I have Commissioner Goddard and yourself?
You'll have to give it to Tony, and our clerk will pass them out at that point.
Are you telling?
Yeah. They become part of the public record. Whatever you share with us becomes part of the public record.
Okay. But, that is fine.
Okay.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I am Kimmy Upton. This is my son, JP. We reside at 136 Carron Court, which is in the 5th District of Putnam County. The property is on Mud Lake. We're here this morning to really please with y'all to rectify our flooding issue. It is an issue that can be solved. There is a culvert on private property at 122 Penile Store Road that is too small to drain Mud Lake in a rapid and effective manner. The water level is compounded by the adjoining lakes, state roads, and county roads that drain into our lake. Granted, our land is low, but that has nothing to do with the drainage. Mud Lake drains into the St. John's River watershed. The St. John's directly below us, which is four feet above sea level on average, and that's per Thad Hart, United States Army Corps of Engineers. And Mud Lake is 48 feet above sea level. And I have, in the folders, I have put pictures of what we've been living with for the last month. So, I'm just begging y'all to do what you can to clean up the culverts and to enlarge the one that is not large enough to drain our lake. And my husband's been in touch with Commissioner Goddard, and so he's well aware. So, I just thank you and really hope that you can help us out.
I want to go back and repeat something that I repeat a lot. I'm still underwater at my place, too. And, but if you go back to June 15th, we had a burn ban on in Putnam County.
Yes.
And we weren't going to have fireworks July 4th.
Right.
And in 65 or 67 days, we had, at the end of my dock, going from dry to seven feet of water.
I know.
And how do we deal? Now, Mr. Tompkins, he'll shake his head back there for you. He's our public works director, okay? So, he hears you, and he will, you know, go in that direction. Commissioner Goddard, if you'd like.
It's just that it really can be resolved. You know, it's just going to take
Right.
cooperation and help and y'all to help us.
Well, the reservoir is open, and it's flowing as much water as it can. The river is still flooded. It's taking as much as it can. I mean, it's just a lot of water out there.
And I understand that. I really do. And I know that y'all have been inundated since Irma.
And last night's rain. We didn't need more rain last night.
I know. And it's like, come on. It's like, please.
But I will tell you this. We had some complaints of roads that were, we had roads that were completely washed out. Two weeks ago, Mr. Tompkins, we started getting calls that roads, the same roads that were washed out were now dusty, and people wanted something done. You're like, there's people still in rubber boots out here.
Right, and we're still in rubber boots.
Yes, I understand.
And like I said, you'll see pictures, and you'll see the emails from my husband, Commissioner Goddard, and, I mean, it's something, it's not new.
No.
Because Ken Amaro was here with the previous owner. I do not, I emailed him. He did not respond to me to find out the outcome of that. But, it's not a new problem. That can be resolved. It just, that culvert's just too small on its own private property, and I don't know what to do about that.
Let's let Mr. Goddard give some comments here.
Well, I was going to have Press, because our public works has been made aware of that several times. And I also went through Mr. Hammond's. From what I gathered from Mr. Hammond's, there's nothing can be done about a culvert on private property, as he's explained to me. But, if, Press, if you would just give us a brief synopsis of what's been going on out there.
Good morning.
Yes, sir. We've looked into this, and you're right. The one that culvert's is private property. But, the main outfall from Mud Lake, we do not have an easement on. The one that comes out of the lake that goes to the river. We've been battling this for years, but we do not have an easement, so we don't have the ability to clean out the major outfall that would drain that Mud Lake area. We've had this situation for years that that area doesn't drain, and we get new residents that move in that are not aware of it because they move in when we're somewhat of a drought period. When we get to these rainy periods, that lake does stage up. But, we can't go in there and clean that major outfall to get to the river. We don't have easements on it, and it's all through private property. So, we've looked at everything we can do from a public work standpoint.
Mr. Tompkins, after the hurricane, I sent an email to you and Water Management. I think Mr. Suggs got it also about, in the future, maybe all of us sitting down, all of our partners, and looking at these easements and, or lack thereof, easements, or where wetlands were filled in. We know where we flooded.
Yes, sir.
And we know that. And we know some areas shouldn't have flooded, based on some things that have happened. So, I think it's, in the future, we're going to have this conversation of where we can do better at in our drainage. Because it's a lot more than just us going out there with a piece of equipment, you know.
I understand that. But, my question is, okay, if there was a small culvert on my land that was causing the issues, I would give my blessing.
Yeah.
You know, please come and make it larger. I don't understand why, if it's on private property, it can't be remedied. I don't understand. You know, I understand it's private property.
Right.
But, I do not understand the, when it's affecting so many people.
Got you. Well, we're on it. So, thank you very much for coming today. And we appreciate it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you again. Mr. Mitch Weller, please.
Mitch Weller, 219 Crestview Drive in Palatka. I'm here on behalf of Blair Estates off Alabama Avenue. Years ago, 2008, Blair Estates was built. The right-of-way was included when they did all the fencing and everything out front. They graded everything. They put grass in. They put ornamental trees in. And weekly, we have it mowed for the association to keep it all looking nice. Last year, we had Hurricane Wilma, and we put trees and everything out on the right-of-way, and it all got cleaned up, and everything was fine. This year, the company that's picking up the trees and everything managed to destroy most of the right-of-way. For one, there's a lot of trees still left there, large logs, limbs, everything. Our guy that mows it's probably going to charge us extra because you've got to go around all kinds of stuff now. Much less, we have ruts that are about a foot and a half deep out in the entire area, so you couldn't even mow it if you wanted to, so it'll be a weed patch. I'm afraid that these guys did it differently than whoever did it last year. Last year, they came in and they... Last year, they came in and they left the truck on the pavement and picked everything up with a grapple hook. This year, they took four-wheel vehicles and just drove through everything. And so, they totally destroyed the entryway, uh, which we would like to get remedied. So, we'd like to keep it all looking nice. Most of the people along Alabama Avenue don't mow, they just wait for the county to come by and, and clean it up. We don't do that, we keep ours neat. But if you go out there and look at it right now, it's, it's not very neat. So, uh, they've still got some cleanup that they need to do, and so we'd like to get that done. I would also, uh, while we're talking about things looking nice, uh, the litter around the county is ridiculous. And on that stretch that we have out in front, about a week and a half ago, I went out with my tractor and halfway filled the bucket full of trash. Two tires, lots of beer cans, bags from Burger King, whatever, assorted other junk that people just throw out. It's my understanding from Keep Putnam Beautiful that there is an ordinance for, uh, littering in the county, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
For one, I don't believe, believe I've ever seen a littering sign in the county that tells about the ordinance or the fines that are involved in it. You can put one on our right-of-way if you'd like, we'd like to have one out there. But it also needs to be enforced. So, I would, uh, would suggest maybe to try to get it enforced, maybe we have the Sheriff's Department write citations on it. And then let them keep half of the money from the citations so they can buy some communications equipment that they apparently need badly. And we'll all be winners with a cleaner county and, uh, have some communication equipment as well. So, I would, would request that you take a look at that. It appears that the ordinance does not get enforced anywhere, and that's why we've got people going out on weekends that are cleaning up the mess for those who are disrespectful to other people's property.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Suggs, um, I don't know if the other commissioners or experienced this, but I'm seeing a lot of what Mr. Weller's saying, uh, on the sides of the right-of-way with these, um, guess they're called caterpillars or whatever, you know, um, they use these rubber tracks and they're making quite a mess on the right-of-way. Uh, is there anything we can do to hold these contractors responsible, or is that, or how are we going to fix this at the end?
I'm sure there's got to be some language within the original contract that was, uh, approved by the Board of County Commissioners some time back for the new, uh, new contracted debris cleanup crew. And we'll look into that and see what we can do in the, in the very, uh, instance what we can do is, Larry, let's make sure that we have a conversation, Mr. Gas, if we could, with our haulers to, uh, uh, remain with their equipment on the right-of-way as, as much as possible, because that's, that's really where it needs to remain. And if the debris is in such a location that it is unattainable or unreachable with the equipment, then we need to do something different with it. But in the interim, let's go ahead and address that upfront and make sure that the equipment that's being utilized strictly remains on the right-of-way that's, uh, you know, at the location.
Okay.
Will we do that, Mr. Gas?
All right, good, thank you, thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Uh, Mr. William Culvert?
Good morning, sir.
I come home Wednesday and
I need you to speak in the microphone, sir.
I come home Wednesday and they picked up the road debris and they totally tore up my front yard. They, I had everything near the side of the road and they went into my yard. I got big grooves cut into my yard, they almost hit my next-door neighbor's fence.
So, they came into your property?
Into the yard, I got ruts right into the yard.
And you live where, sir?
Uh, one twenty-nine Velvet Street in Alakin.
One twenty-nine?
Velvet.
Velvet.
I live in Palm Shores.
Palm Shores subdivision, okay, all right. Mr. Gas, did, okay, Mr. Gas over here is our sanitation director and we'll take a look at that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Culvert.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
You, thank you. Uh, Ms. Rhonda Masters? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good to meet you.
Uh, thank you. I, uh, am here because I represent, Rhonda Masters, representing Saint Paul's Episcopal Church at Federal Point. And we, um,
Mike, could you? Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
We're at one twenty-four Commercial Avenue in East Platteka. Uh, earlier this year, this commission was kind enough to provide us with a letter of support for a grant that we were applying for, for property improvement at the church. Um, the improvement was going to be in support of the, um, uh, bike trail and the, um, not just the bike trail, but for the kayakers for Bartram. So, unfortunately, we did not receive our grant. So, we were very sad about that. We're working with Sam Carr and with Craig McLean, and they're helping us locate maybe other grants that would be available that we're going to apply for. In the meantime, we don't want to wait. And so, we are going to be holding a series of fundraisers. The first one is going to be November the fourth. It's a barbecue and a plant swap. We would love for you all to attend, especially you, Commissioner Turner, since you're our new representative. And we're going to be using the funds that we raise at this barbecue to, um, do phase one in our mines, and that would be to picnic tables to go into our pavilion for, as a rest stop for the bikers and, uh, water, uh, supply for the bikers. As you all know, we're a, a well-traveled spur off of the, um, off of the bike path, and then we're right there on the Saint Johns River. So, we'll be raising other funds to do other improvements in the near future. Hopefully, it'll be greatly improved within the next year, but I would love for you all to attend.
What was that date again?
November the fourth, it's eleven AM to three. Barbecue, plant swap, we're going to have artisans there. The Platteka High School Ceramics, uh, Club will be there selling some things that they've made to raise money. Um, we'll have, uh, there's a, some others who will be there selling their items. Some of the beekeepers will be there and that type of thing. So, it's sort of a plant swap, mm, county, um, get-together, so please come and join us.
And you do a lot at that church. Why don't you expand on some of the other thing? I know Commissioner Lible has been involved out there as I have in the past, but talk about the other things you do out there.
Um, most recently, what we did was, um, right after Hurricane Irma, of course, like a lot of others, we didn't have any power out at the point. And with all the flooding that we had, it was very difficult. So, we actually, um, threw a lot of, because we're lucky enough at the church to have gas instead of electric for our cooking abilities, we actually cooked a dinner. And then went door to door and invited everyone in the community to come have a free, uh, dinner, since they had no power, so they could have a hot meal. Um, so, it's just that type of thing. We have, uh, we've had our fish fry in the past years, raising money. Um, so, we do a lot of things in support of the community. A lot of things with hospice in the past with the children of our community. So, we're going to continue that and hopefully in the future, be able to support the, the many cyclists and the kayakers that come our way.
Great location, great thing, thank you very much, Ms. Upton.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming today, and we'll see you November fourth from eleven to three. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak to us that did not fill out a blue card? Now's your opportunity. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of our meeting. Go to the consent agenda, consent agenda, I'm sorry. Commissioners, you have an, uh, altered one today. You have items A through M, is there any items you'd like to pull?
I'd like to, uh, pull C, D, and E, just to discuss them. And also, excuse me, N, L.
Any others?
Both of mine got discussed in public comment.
Mine too, sir.
But let me pull G.
Okay, all right.
I want to pull G also.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
They've already been pulled.
Okay, good. All right, then we'll just go in order. Uh, items C, Commissioner Goddard, that is page twenty-seven of your packet.
Correct. And, uh, Mr. St, yes, thank you. Uh, must my question on this, I, I see these quite often, you know, for, uh, uh, basically support. Since I've been here in a year, I'm just curious, what is our total amount that we pay for support?
For all the different software hardware?
All of these things, every time I turn around, there's one for thirty-four, one for fifty, one for forty. Uh, and I realize they're all important, they're all, uh, for different things. It just, uh, is, is a question that was answered, or given to me.
I would have to pull my, my, my budget spreadsheet to get a line item total for you right at this moment. But, um, we're probably running a couple hundred thousand dollars annually. Um, please note that one of these E is actually a grant application.
Yes.
So, as long as we get that grant, that won't come out of the budget. But the other two are regular maintenance. Let's see, get this straight, uh, C is our, uh, is a database system that we use for the clerk's office and various ones in the county, and our backup software for the county. D is our main accounting, finance, HR.
General Ledger.
General Ledger supports Susan's operation. I'm not happy with the numbers either, but there's absolutely nothing I can do about it.
Well, I, what I was wanting is just kind of an explanation as to what these entail. I mean, they're support, um,
If we have an issue with one of these products that we're using, we can call for support. They, uh, offer upgrades on our, upgrades on a regular basis, so we can upgrade, fix issues that we have. Um, new features of our product, they'll give us an up, an upgrade to it. You can go, you know, you go without it, you're without insurance. It's, it's like driving your car without insurance. And you can do it, but it's probably not
Yeah, I've, I've understood that, and I did want to bring up, the other one in here on E is basically, that's a grant for equipment that will become ours anyway.
That, and the important thing about that, that's E nine-one-one, that comes with the state mandate that we do some of these things, it's coming with an upgrade to support full text to nine-one-one. Um, y'all probably have all noticed throughout the county that texting seems to go through when a voice call won't. So, for notifying nine-one-one of an issue, um, the state's mandated that we implement fully text to nine-one-one. This equipment, along with all the maintenance that goes with it, will give us that. And so, it's a, it's a piece we have to do, one way or the other, grants or no grant would be doing this one.
Well, I did have another question. During the storm, one of the problems that we had were, we were sending out digital messages. Unfortunately, no one was really receiving them. Uh, is this, any of this equipment would help that on, I mean, we, we can't do anything about the private vendors whatsoever, but,
This is not going to help that, because this is on our end, on the receiving end of the text messages that come through the cell towers. Um, what you're speaking of is a broader project that we're going to be discussing at the next workshop on how to, uh, bring more connectivity to rural areas of our county. If you're in an area where a tower was down without power, um, if it was backfed by Comcast, there were some critical hours there where there was none. There was not any service.
Yes.
Out of my hands.
I heard a lot about it. Uh, I just wanted to reiterate too, that you have been doing a great job as far as keeping our cost as low as possible.
Doing everything I can.
Um, you know, consolidation and everything else. But I, I had to bring that up, because I've had this brought up, of how much we do spend for IT. But then again, who wants to do without it? And I didn't create the beast, it just is there.
Tell me to cut it, you know, I will.
But that I did assure them, you are doing everything possible to keep our cost a, as low as possible.
We'll do everything we can.
Thank you, thanks.
Commissioner Lible, you had a comment?
Uh, no, it's, it's fine.
Okay, good.
Guys, good.
Mr. Chairman, if I would before
Mr. Suggs, please.
Mr. Suggs steps away from the microphone, from the podium. Um, great comments from the Commissioner on the end down there. I, I really, that, that both of you Commissioners are right on point with both of the, uh, comments here. But, Mr. Suggs has done an excellent job since I've been here on keeping the things going that we need to keep going during the hurricane out of the EOC Center, as well as, uh, within the administration offices and everywhere else. But I also want to point out that this week, that he partnered up with the Sheriff's Office to offer some assistance as well, when the Sheriff's Office had some issues that needed his expertise. Uh, so, I just want to throw that out there as well, that we're doing the things that we said we're going to do. We're already, uh, reaching beyond the lines of, of the County Administration Office and, and other departments and, and helping out where we can. And Bob, I just want to say that Sheriff was very thankful for that, and I wanted to publicly thank you for that as well, because that's exactly what we need to be doing, so thank you.
Well, we'll, we'll help them out and take care of that, we'll get that, everything straightened out out there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Right?
Thank you, sir. Okay, gentlemen, the next item is Commissioner Lible and Commissioner Pickens, item G. This is going to be page five of your new packet that was distributed.
Right, if we could bring Mr. Nimitz up, please, just give us an update. I'm sure Commissioner Pickens has got
Mr. Tompkins, Mr. Nimitz, why don't you come up?
I've been living with this project for quite a few years.
I'm sure you have.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, um,
It seems to recycle, I mean, when I saw it on there again, I'm like, good lord.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that they, um, you explain to the audience and our viewers that, uh, this is a new part of the, of the project for Fort Gates Ferry and that the engineering, it's not a duplication, that this is for new engineering for the, uh, the Fort Gates Ferry landing side that we were not going to redo.
That is, that is correct, I mean, Mike's been working very diligently on this. With what happened with the forest roads over there, with that, uh, grant money being redistributed, we were able to get DOT to agree to pay for the design of the, um, forest side of the ferry landing for Fort Gates. And this is what this is for tailor engineering to design the south side or the west side of the ferry landing. What we were previously working on was I call the Putnam County side, which was the road going to it in the ferry landing there, that's already under design and that's ready to be out to bid. This is the other side of the ferry landing, which we had not had designed previously. So, it is new work that was, is funding through the DOT monies.
Okay, so, yeah, Mr. Pickens? So, we rehashed the deal with FDOT, what about Fort Gates Ferry Road? Now, I know that that's been put on hold and
We run into
or, or
Well, we've run into
Not considered anymore, is, is the verbiage you used.
Well, we're paving the road from, um, Mount Royal to the ferry landing. That's in design now and is final, that's one of the, uh, consent items this morning, was the grant of easement from the state to finish that road up. Soon as we get that easement, then we can bid the project, it's completely designed. Uh, DOT won't let us bid it until we have all the easements, uh, from the state in hand.
Okay.
So, that's what we're working on it. So, we'll have a paved road now all the way to the ferry landing.
Well, let's hop over the river, that's where I am. Let's go on the west side.
Okay.
And, uh, this, this project we, we have been working on for about twenty-four months real strong has, is not being considered for any, uh, future development. Is that what I heard, Mr. Nimitz?
Well, the design is a hundred percent complete, the studies, the environmental studies will be complete, but we cannot get the cooperation from the Ocala National Forest to proceed forward with the project.
Okay, that's what it looked like to me, the forest management has killed it. And
Correct.
Did they give an explanation?
No, we, we tried multiple, uh, alternatives using shell rock in lieu of the asphalt, uh, pretty much every different design you can think of to try to accommodate their environmental concerns, um, but we couldn't get them to budge.
All right, we can discuss this more in
Transportation.
Transportation today, but I, I'm very concerned about this, I really am.
It, it is their asset, and without their permission, we, we cannot proceed forward. And initially, um, the previous, uh, Forest Ranger, we did have an arrangement with him, and the replacement Forest Ranger rescinded on that agreement. So, it, it basically stopped us dead in our tracks.
Well, this latest attempt to halt it seems to stem from the storms. They had kind of a, I won't say it, but explanation that was a little weak, but.
I will say too, Commissioner, we've had several meetings with, uh, Bobby Payne's office and, uh, Congressman Yoho's office too. Uh, we're working on it from different angles. Uh, there, the money for the Forest Service was cut dramatically for their, uh, maintenance of, of the forest roads. Um, they went from two hundred thousand dollars five years ago to twenty thousand dollars. So, so they're feeling the budget crunch too. But they basically told us they did not have the capability to maintain, uh, anything other than basically a dirt road.
Well, we're got, we've got a serious problem there, because we have tax-paying Putnam County residents that live in the forest that need ingress egress.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this is not acceptable. I mean, either, if they I mean, either if they can't do it, then the restrictions for us to be able to spend our own tax dollars for our taxpayers in that area should be reestablished. Don't you agree? I mean, it's, they've taken, and in the audit, they dinged us on it.
Yes, they did.
You know, and, and we've taken away our service to these people. And I fully expect they're going to fill this room up. And I know Ms. Leota's getting those calls is from Bobby Payne's office. And thank you for taking them because some of them are very hot under the collar about it. But um, we've got to grab this by the horns somehow. We've got to give our residents some kind of relief. We're doing maintenance on the dam tomorrow. Their only way in and out of their subdivisions now is halted because of that maintenance for the day. So if somebody had a problem, they couldn't get in there if they tried.
Yeah, we were just notified to that last week that the Forest Service had closed Rodman Dam Road for maintenance activities and that there was considerably detour, but they'd have to live with it.
Well, I forwarded something to you yesterday and Forest Road seventy-seven, I don't know what they call it now. It's, but anyhow, you know what it is. We've got to get that back into control. At least that gave everybody passage. It really did. That one road is very important and we don't have that jurisdiction now.
That is correct. Okay.
Okay, that's all. I don't.
Any other items for public works?
Mr. Goddard has a question.
Now, because I, I know press and I discuss this road pretty regularly, but you have everything, the engineering is all done. You're just waiting on approval. So I mean, it's not like it's, 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 it's not.
That's on the east side. That's on the east side.
Well, I think you also had engineering down on the actual.
West side also. We had a complete set of engineering done on both sides. What, what halted it was the Forest Service.
So it's not really a, I know myself, and I don't think press is giving up on this. We're just trying different ways to get it done. Because I, I really, as you, I, it, it needs to be done. This is an important, very important road. It's, it needs to be, it needs to be done.
Press, before you leave, two really quick things and we can talk about it, transportation today. The dredging, did we solve that problem about the dredging of the river? We had some issues there on the west side getting, and I guess the water level's probably pretty high right now. But.
We're still working on that. We haven't resolved that. We really need to see what, what happened to the river after all this flooding, once the water recedes. It may have taken care of itself. So most of the pilings and the ferry landing itself was destroyed. So we need to really check it out. Once the water gets down, we'll check and see how, really what it stands.
And the ferry flooded too. It was, it sunk.
Yeah, the ferry sunk and I think they're still trying to raise it. But they haven't been too successful yet.
All right. Yeah, Press, Mr. Chairman, I spoke with Dick Hackett, who owns the, or runs the Fort Gates Ferry. And when the water level goes down a little more, they're going to try to raise and try to repair it, is his plan. But without a ferry landing, it doesn't look like it's going to be much use. Other than it'll be out of, it won't be sunk anymore, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, sir, Mr. Labou.
I'd be remiss not to thank Mr. Bennett and his organization. FDOT is with us in the room today. I think the deal on the east side of the river was great. So anyhow, we've got some work, which has nothing to do with you on the west side to do. Thank you, Barney.
You know, the, the sad part is, and you're right, and Mr. Chairman will be right with you. The sad part is how much the state and DOT spent on those engineering and getting all that ready. For one person to stop and say, not going to do it. I mean, that's just ludicrous to me. But there's my public comment. Mr. Turner.
It'd be a possibility for me to request that today in transportation that we have a short presentation on the subject that we're talking about on these roads. It's new to me and obviously it's not new to them. And I'd like to understand it a little more.
We could all use a refreshing. That's what I'm trying to achieve here.
I wouldn't mind maybe, I don't know that right now is the proper time to do it. But I think transportation this afternoon, if that give a, Press and his department maybe a little time to come up with a, I mean, it doesn't have to be a formal presentation, just an, an update or maybe where we are and how we got here. I mean, that shouldn't take too long.
I will say we have quite a lengthy agenda for this afternoon. If it would be agreeable, I'd, I'd rather have the time to put together a decent presentation, bring it to you, the next transportation board. Like I said, we're, we're going to be in for quite a while today.
Let's fly at a thirty thousand foot level at transportation today and just hit the highlights for, for all of us to be refreshed on. Because we all are getting calls right now.
We all are, believe me, we're getting them all, so.
It's the five minute version today.
Okay, we'll see what we, we put together for this afternoon.
Do the real deal later on when you have time and, and more, and more time to prepare.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Goddard, you had item number L, page one seventy-two of your packet.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. You have the floor, sir.
Yes, I was looking for Mr. Gast. There's.
He's behind Barney over there.
Yeah, this, I just need you to, you know, it's almost like every time we have to have you explain it, but I, I would like you to explain it so that everyone can, can hear the explanation.
Compliance.
Yes.
All right, this is for compliance monitoring. We've got several wells at the two landfills that we currently have. One at the Huntington landfill and the main landfill, the central landfill. This is for semi-annual groundwater testing. It's also for the compliance monitoring that we have. There was some benzene that had leaked years ago from the old unlined landfill. And this is also monitoring the wells on private property where this plume has gone to, to check it out. I've got two volumes I'll show you, which is the results from one sampling event. And they're about that thick as to everything that's got to be compiled into it. This is a mandated requirement. We have to do this according to DEP. It's part of our permit. And this is what has to be done.
And also, I just wanted, as I understand, every time we have it monitored, we are actually showing less and less intrusion.
We were showing less and hopefully it's going to continue doing that way. We've had a couple of anomalies here and there where we had isolated incidences when we re-sample, it's not there. So, you know, it's a, it's a moving target sometimes. We actually had one that, that had a hit that shouldn't have had a hit. We couldn't figure out. When we re-sampled, there was no hit. So it could have been a laboratory contamination. It could have been something happened during the, the gathering of the sample, but.
Was that at Huntington?
No, that was actually on a background well for the landfill.
But you had, we're close at Huntington to a closeout phase, which is less monitoring.
We are very close. I, I'm spending a little bit of money on it to make sure that it will pass the final go around and then we will have no more financial responsibility that's dictated by the state at that landfill.
And that lessens this amount you're concerned with.
Yes, and that's the way I understood it and, and that we are constantly improving and pretty, eventually this will be not completely eliminated, but substantially reduced.
We will always have to monitor the background wells and the compliance wells. That will be happening for as long as we run the landfill. When we close the landfill, we'll still have to do it for thirty years after that.
Correct.
Mr. Gast, once we close Huntington down, that'll join the Antlerkin site because we're not monitoring Antlerkin anymore, correct?
Correct.
So that'll relieve us and the only one we'll have is the central landfill.
Correct.
Good deal. Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Turner.
This is one of the items I also wanted to pull. I have a question or two for Mr. Gast. I'm assuming that this is acquired by DEP, so I get that part of it. So how did we arrive at number one, that we're going to use Jones Edmonds? And number two, how did we arrive at how much they cost? Is this an annual contract that's been bid out? Is this just, we just called them up, said, how much are you going to charge us this year? How did we arrive at the, that the cost for this service was one hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars?
If you look on page one seventy-seven, that gives you their price schedule. And that is the estimated amount of labor hours. And there is a six thousand dollar contingency. Six thousand, two hundred and thirty dollar resampling contingency in case they have to re-sample. And that's based on the labor rates that they had, which was put out in an RFQ. We had an RFQ that went out earlier this year.
Bid it out in an RFQ?
Yes.
They responded with these rates?
Yes.
Did anyone else respond?
Yes, we had two other people respond. Well, we actually had six people respond.
Jones Edmonds was the lowest qualified responder.
Jones Edmonds was the most qualified respondent.
They weren't the lowest qualified responder?
No, they were the highest rated respondent.
Why did we send out an RFQ if we're going to take the highest guy anyhow?
An RFQ is a request for qualifications to get the, the most qualified people to perform the work that we can.
So we're, they're the only ones we ask for prices from. We ask for qualifications from all the people. And then we select the qualified person and then we ask them for their best case guess of what it's going to cost to complete this service?
Correct.
If I might, Mr. Turner, it's a statutory provision where it's called CCNA, which is Contractors or Competitive, Competitive Competitive Consultants Negotiation Act, I think, is it? Where it doesn't allow the county to, to take price into consideration when selecting certain professionals, one of which being engineering professionals. So, so we've got, we put that out. We, we've got a number of, a number of entities that we entered into continuing services contracts with. And Jones Edmonds, Jones Edmonds is one of those entities. And then throughout the year, when different projects come up, Mr. Gast will, will contact one of those entities off the list and say, okay, what will your, what will your price be to, to provide these, these particular services under that continuing services agreement?
I'm well aware of how that works, Mr. Manning. I was just trying to make sure that we had done this the way we were supposed to and not just called. I asked, did he do an RFQ? He said he did. That's fine. That's what I wanted to know, that, that we did an RFQ and we, and they responded. And that then we got prices from them. But I, I think it should be completely open and transparent how this works. Not just that we went and asked somebody for a bid, which is what I was trying to get to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Appreciate it. Any other questions for Mr. Gast? Thank you, Mr. Gast. Okay, gentlemen, we have been through items A through M. The chair will entertain a motion.
To move.
Second.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Labou. Any further discussions on item A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, and M? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign the ayes habit. Mr. Barney Bennett with Florida Department of Transportation, County Work Program Priorities. Good morning, sir, and welcome. Did you drive in from Lake City this morning?
Yes, I did. I had a nice long drive this morning.
All the way down one hundred?
All the way down one hundred.
That's right. We all know that road well too.
Very well, sir. And again, my name is Barney Bennett with the Florida Department of Transportation, and I do have one handout.
That'd be fine. If you give it to Commissioner Turner, he'll pass them down. Keep you from having to. Thank you, sir. You always bring good news to us, so.
Well, it's always challenging following a water management district or a sheriff's office that brings in checks and cashes, you know, cash on the order of a million dollars. I never bring you a check. We never bring you cash. But we do, do try to bring you a good list of projects.
Well, they have to travel on the roads that you build, so there you go.
It's all good.
That's it.
So the handout I gave you is a copy of our tentative work program that will be submitted to the legislature. It's for fiscal years twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three. Within this list of projects, I just really wanted to highlight a couple of them. And the top tier projects are the state highway system. You're familiar with the four lane through Interlock and, and so on. But right towards the middle, there's a project, this two-one-zero-zero-three-one-eight, which is State Road one hundred from the Water Management District of East of US seventeen. That is for acquisition of right-of-way for the trail project. I did want to report that, that the DOT now has acquired the right-of-way from the Water Management District offices to County Road two sixteen. That took us almost five years to acquire that right-of-way. It was very complicated. The, the legal ownership of the ground was complicated. There is a business set up on that property that DOT is engaged to relocate. As well as there are some buildings that will need to be removed from that property. So that acquisition was very complicated. But it has happened. We do, and we do now own it. We have a deed for that property. So the balance of this is to go then from County Road two sixteen to US seventeen essentially. But I will say within that route, we have removed the piece around Phillips Dairy Road. There's, there's a number of businesses between State Road nineteen and Phillips Dairy. There's got to be at least ten property owners. It's just going to be too much of an issue to acquire that much property for a trail project. As time goes on, we'll look at two alternatives. One is to bring the trail into State Road one hundred right-of-way or to come up to Phillips Dairy Road. At this point, we don't know. But what I want to point out is on this list of projects, that right-of-way is to acquire from County Road two sixteen to US seventeen minus the piece around Phillips Dairy.
That deserved a round of applause too.
I hear you. Yeah, I agree. That's a lot of hard work.
That's key.
That, that was a lot of work.
It was. And I'm, I'm, you stunned me today. Excellent.
It's a big announcement, yes. In the world of trails and, and kind of going on, as, as you can see now, we are under construction, the segment. Near the Water Management District is under construction, as well as going into St. Johns County, the area around Hastings, that is going to construction right now. So we're, we're getting ready to put down, we're getting ready to turn dirt on, on several miles of trail right in this, this local area.
If I could, Mr. Bennett, for the other commissioners, what it means, that's the last gap from our rail trail to the river to sea loop.
Right.
That completes it once we're done. So that's a huge, huge deal. Thank you.
Right. And of course, we're working with St. Johns County and the city of St. Augustine to then do our planning studies to extend that trail on into the city of St. Augustine. And that's just, just now getting started.
Wow. Excellent.
Continuing through the list of projects, the other one I wanted to bring up in the, the top tier project, the top block of projects on state highway systems is the State Road one hundred, East End Road. It's identified as a roundabout project. I know several months ago, there was a, a workshop held, a couple of different alternatives were brought up, one being a roundabout, one being a T intersection. It's my understanding the T intersection is the locally preferred alternative. We, as a state agency and Department of Transportation, we support both the roundabout and the T intersection. Both of them have a benefit to cost ratio that is good, that we, we will accept. What we'd like to do is come back to this board and get a resolution or an affirmation of which of those alternatives y'all would like to see. I understand that's going to go back to your transportation commission possibly. I'm going to get some drawings back to press. So at a future date, we would like to get what the board's preference is, whether we go with the roundabout option or the T intersection option. And again, DOT is good with both of those options. We would just like to know what, what's your preference on it?
Yeah, well, I was fixing to say something.
Well, we got East End resident here.
I would rec, really, I want to refer to Mr. Turner. He just got appointed by the governor representing that area. At the time, we had the public meetings, Mr. Turner was not appointed. So we were lack of commissioner over there. So, Mr. Turner, I'm going to ask you to go first, sir.
From everybody that I've talked to, I haven't seen a single person, not one person, who wanted a roundabout at the end of East End Road. We need to find another option than that. It was my understanding at the, at the workshop or the meeting they had at the women's club a year ago, or whenever it was, that there, that the most, that the option that was most liked by everyone there was an, an, an option between the two, where you could go straight out east end if you were leaving east end, but a turn lane T to come back in, to turn back in. And so you'd have a turn lane going to the south or the, and then the, and then you could leave east end by going straight off, kind of like it is right now. And that's what I was told was the, the, the option that were, was liked by most. And that's what I was told was the, the, the option that were, was liked by most of the people that were there. If that for some reason can't be done, or we're not sure, or we're still designing or whatever, would you please let me know? If I have to have another workshop, I live on East End Road, and I'd like to continue living there after you did, after you did. Anyhow, if possible, I would, if, if we don't know what we're gonna do and we need something else done, please let me know what it is, because a roundabout there is not the option.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Libley.
To answer your question, Mr. Bennett, you said that this project is going back to the Transportation Commission?
That's just a conversation I had with press. I'm gonna get press the drawings for the T intersection. And I guess really my point is I understand the board's not ready to make your recommendations to DOT at this point in time.
I think you meant the Transportation Committee.
Committee, okay.
Not the commission.
Oh, not the big commission?
Not the big.
Statewide.
Commission, no.
Okay, that's different. Well, I just wanted our meeting, Terry, after, if they're, if the state board was meeting, there's no sense in us making any requests till they're done.
Yeah, I know, and I apologize for, for misspeaking. It's, it's the county.
Would there be a possibility that your department would consider coming back out with Commissioner Turner to do another public meeting out there? If he so desires, here's the two options, and we really don't, you know, we don't, we don't mind either one. And let the people decide. Would that be something you might be interested in, Mr. Turner?
If, if it will help DOT, I would be more than happy to do that. But I think I'm listening, if I'm listening to Commissioner Libley correctly, I think it's got to go to the commission in Tallahassee.
No, 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 he misspoke. It's, it's gonna go to our Transportation Committee.
It's gonna go to Transportation.
Yeah, it has two, two options for us to look at, to reconsider.
Right, right. And the bottom line is this, DOT is committed to doing a safety project at that intersection. We just need to know what the board's preference is to go the roundabout or the T intersection. We are good with either one.
There we go. I'm, I'm, yeah.
And if you don't mind, we'll deal with it in Transportation, and we can all talk to them in that committee too about it, because, I mean, I, this is a very, this is a very heated topic in our area, that we don't want, that the citizens do not want a roundabout there. So, you know, if we could, and I've had multiple citizens tell me exactly what they thought, which is kind of a, kind of a cross between the designs to where you can leave East End Road without, without going through this, but coming back on. You, you could go into a turn lane, and that's where the safety would be. You'd actually go around the corner and could see what's coming at you before you turn and go across and get off, back on the road.
Fair enough. Mr. Hoffman, is this on our agenda today, Transportation? No?
Kinda, kinda hit press on very short notice.
No, no, you're fine. You're fine.
Just found out that DOT had considered a second option. We had been basically had, had a roundabout. And we just found out in the last few days that DOT has now agreed to this T intersection. So I asked Barney to get me the final drawing, so I could take it back to Transportation Committee, so y'all could see what, what, what we're presenting now. So we, like I said, we just got the information a couple of days ago, but I think this is a tremendous improvement. And I applaud DOT for working with us and hearing what we're saying, because we, we, we didn't really have a whole lot of support for the roundabout from anybody. And, and so I think this is a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pickens.
I attended that meeting, I think along with Chairman Harvey and Commissioner Goddard. And I want to confirm what Commissioner Turner said is, there were probably, what, at least seventy-five people. There may have been a hundred.
In that little room.
In that small room. And when I left that meeting, one thing I was one hundred percent sure of, that not anybody in that room wanted a roundabout.
That's right.
There was no way. They wanted some type of the T section that Terry was talking about, so.
Okay, Mr. Bennett, before we leave this section right here, this is, I want to be able to explain this properly, Commissioner Turner. DOT's budget year starts July, correct?
Correct.
And goes, okay, so when you see two thousand nineteen, that really means two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget year.
Correct. Twenty nineteen, and in DOT years, it begins July first of two thousand eighteen.
Okay, so the bottom line here, you're gonna start doing right-of-way acquisitions in nineteen, twenty, and construction in twenty-one. So it's a three-year project out, start, starting this coming July. Is that correct?
That is correct, and, and that's why we need to nail down which, which geometry we need to work with.
My point there is it not, we don't have to decide it today.
Right.
We can, we can bring this up on our transportation meeting in November and have you a decision pretty soon on that.
Right.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so we've got time. We've, we've got time on it.
Well, and the other good thing, if you notice, in, in next fiscal year of DOT, you've got a lot of money being spent in Putnam County with construction, right-of-way purchasing. You've got a lot of things happening. It's good, that are huge for Putnam County.
Yes, we do. We do have a lot of projects in Putnam County. That's true.
All right. I didn't mean to take you off your presentation, so.
No, no, it's all good. Welcome the conversation. Looking into the next tier of projects here, these are the highways, the local roads. The very top project is a sidewalk project down in Crescent City, which I believe you're familiar with. The St. Johns Avenue, which is also a transportation alternative project, is, is here in Palatka, as well as the County Road three fifteen, which is a SCOP project. And looking into the bottom tier of projects, we've got a Lake Susan Drive project, we've got a Lake Ashley Drive project, Palm Avenue, which again is a sidewalk project, as well as the Drayton Island Ferry Landing, which is a bridge project. So in a nutshell, that's what we have in our work program tentatively and, and going forward. Speaking of the work program, again, this is a list of projects for Putnam County. We are going through our public hearings processes right now. The actual public hearing was just held in Jacksonville. Tonight, we have the public workshop in Lake City. However, we do have our entire work program on a website. The website is d two W P P H dot com, which is short for District Two Work Program Public Hearing. And again, it's D two two, like the number two, d two W P P H dot com. You can pull up all the counties in District Two and look at the work program. Comments on the work program are due November twentieth. You can make those comments directly onto the website. The only advantage to coming to Lake City is because we're, if you do come to Lake City, we're gonna sit you down in front of a computer and say, go to the website, is at least we will have people that answer questions if any come up. But again, that's tonight. Comments due November twentieth. Continuing with Scrap, SCOP, SIGP, and TRIP projects, there's, there's a couple of things that are new this year. The first thing that's new is we have consolidated the application form. We talked about it in times past, that we have Scrap, SCOP, SIGP, TRIP. Each of these programs have different requirements. We've asked for two projects under each program. And invariably, when we select the program, we never fund it under the program was actually submitted under, because a lot of these projects will meet multiple, multiple programs. So we've consolidated the, the application form as a PDF. So you will submit the project to us. We will review the project. If selected, we will figure out the funding source. However, a second change that comes with this is that we are limiting it to only three applications per county. We used to request four, two applications per program, which on, in Putnam County, since your, your TRIP agency plus you qualify for Scrap, SCOP, and SIGP, could submit on the order of eight, eight applications. When you add this county, mostly NPO counties, Nassau County, we were getting far more applications than we could fund. We were getting on an order of about eighty-five applications a year, and we can fund ten. So that meant that the county staff was spending a lot of time filling out applications. We were spending a lot of time reviewing applications, and we have nowhere near that kind of money. So we have reduced the total number of applications to three per county. And again, it can qualify under any of those programs. The person filling out the application doesn't need to know which program is going under. We'll figure that out. We do have a web-based version of this application fairly well complete. The issue being right now is we do not have the property security clearances to upload those applications to the, inside the DOT firewall. So we're working in Tallahassee on that. And the problem is that we're asking for maps and engineers' estimates to be uploaded to our website. It's inside the DOT firewall. Our computer guys just like freak out over that. So we're working on it. So we're working on the website. But nonetheless, the, the paper application or the PDF is, is a way to submit if our website's not up. Those applications are due to us by December twenty-ninth. The third thing, and this, this came up a few minutes ago, is on these applications, if the right-of-way is not in public ownership or is in the control of the county, the likelihood of that project being selected for funding is almost nonexistent. The, the project's in the national force. It is a national force. That requires a NEPA action. I'm sure Mike and Press are very familiar with how complicated it is to do a NEPA action. DOT, we're very familiar with that. Getting a NEPA action, getting the use of federal lands is very, very complicated. And similarly going ahead, especially in the paving of dirt roads, if you have to acquire a right-of-way, if we put the funding out there, you have to acquire a right-of-way, you have an unwilling seller, it ties up our funding, it doesn't get projects on the ground. It, it, it just holds up everything. The majority of our extensions on projects are due to right-of-way not in public ownership. So going forward, if those projects are submitted to us, if the right-of-way is not owned or controlled by the county, the likelihood of that being programmed is, is very, very minimal. Extenuating circumstances, sure, but it's very, very unlikely. Again, applications for Scrap, SCOP, SIGP, and TRIP due December twenty-ninth. Transportation alternatives, also requesting projects, bike paths and sidewalks, due to us by December first. And that's all I have. If you have any questions towards your work program.
I do want to say one thing to you. Last year, when the new commissioners came on board, we were all in Tallahassee. And one of the big things we spoke to the director about was that third-party administrator on top of Scrap and SCOP programs, that was sucked money away from the program. DOT heard us loud and clear, and has, I think you're today, if not mistaken, or, or already have made a determination that you're not gonna use that third-party person anymore on smaller Scrap and SCOP programs. So that helps the funding cycles of these pro, I mean, the funding of these programs, not being heavily weighted on the engineering side.
Right, and I presume you mean the, the CEI, the construction, engineering inspections.
Right.
As of right now today, we have not gotten word from Tallahassee that we can stop that. I know it's been discussed. I know it's been actually discussed for a considerable length of time. Right now today, we do require that third-party. We, we do not allow the inspection firm to be this, we do not allow the design firm to do the inspections. Sort of like taking a math test and correcting your own test, kind of a thing. That's as of right now today. We do expect that directive to come down sometime. We really would have expected to be here already, but as, as of right now today, we do not have it in hand. It has been discussed. We believe it is coming, but right now, we do not have it in hand.
But we thank you for listening, and that will help small county programs. Commissioner Libley?
Yes, I'm not being paranoid here, but I'm paranoid. In the changes you just named on the number of projects requested by counties being lowered, there's no changes from the legislative or, or executive branch of state government on the funding amounts for Scrap and SCOP. Is there?
That is correct. There's no reduction in funding. The only issue we have is we're getting far more applications than we can actually fund, and the staff time it takes to.
You're just trying to find efficiencies. I got that. But I, I know that we were threatened three or four years ago with changes to the funding. We're always, as a rural county, I mean, that's our only way we get long roads and these projects done, and we thank you for that.
Right. As I understand, the TRIP funding is the only funding that had been reduced several years ago. But as, within the last five years going forward, there, there's no change in funding that I've seen at all.
Thank you for that good news on that major gap today. That is huge.
Okay.
Commissioners, any comment? Questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Bennett, just because I had comments about that, I don't want you to think that I don't truly appreciate you being here with us today.
He just has to live with the neighbors, then.
Amen.
Thanks for a very important time. All right, thank you, sir, and give our regards to Mr. Evans, okay?
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you coming all the way down from on one hundred, hour and a half drive.
Very good.
All right. Thank you. Scott Modisette, Summit Professional Services Housing Rehab Grant Status Report.
Good morning, Chairman Harvey, members of the commission. I'm Scott Modisette with Summit Professional Services. I'm here today to give the final status report on your housing rehabilitation program. When nearing completion of the program, we had one manufactured home that was delayed. The manufacturer had a manufacturing capacity issue. We identified that back in August, and just as a proactive step, went ahead and requested an extension on your grant agreement with the state. It was gonna expire December first. Since that time, the home has been delivered. We expect to have it installed the first week of November, so even though that extension is, will still be in place, we do expect to be done before the original, the original completion date.
And that mobile home had to come from out of county.
Yes, sir.
Our county people did not bid on that home.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So that, we've got, barring any more bad weather, we expect to have that final manufactured home in the first week of November. After completion of the final housing unit, we'll have rehabilitated four housing units and demolished and replaced seven housing units. I've got a list of the homeowners that were assisted in your packet. There were eight homeowners on the attached list that qualified for the program. However, due to commitments within your agreement with the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, you're required to assist a certain number of extremely low-income households. So we had to kinda skip down the list to make sure that we got, we met that commitment. So there were a number of homes that we weren't able to assist due to insufficient funds being available through the program. Those homeowners, if the county chooses to reapply again for the, the state CDBG program, would need to come back in and, and reapply and be requalified for the program. That said, we are expecting probably in January or February, depending on how quickly the state opens the new cycle, you would be eligible to apply again for another grant of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In our previous discussions in application development, the commission had shown an interest in possibly pursuing.
Excuse us. Guys, it's hard to hear up here. Thank you. I'm sorry, Scott.
Yes, sir. So you'd, you'd be eligible to apply again for another grant. When we were developing this last grant in two thousand fourteen, there was some discussion with the commission on whether you would wanna do another housing rehabilitation program, or if you might wanna seek the infrastructure funding that's available through CDBG. So I would be bringing that back before you. I'd discuss it with, with Mr. Suggs to see what, if you had any projects. The infrastructure portion, county's required to choose either housing rehabilitation or infrastructure when you develop your application. And some of you have been through the process before. We'll do a public hearing, at which time the commission would select which category to pursue. The infrastructure program is targeted towards a low-income neighborhood. We established that through income household, income surveying, where we go out, we'd identify the project area. It can be water, sewer, street resurfacing, really any type of public infrastructure project. We'd identify the area where, which is serviced by that project, and then we'd have to do income surveying on the homes and make sure that at least fifty-one percent of the homes in that area, the benefit from the project are low to moderate income. So there's some, there's some development that has to go through that process to identify a target area, make sure it would be qualified, and also make sure you, the funds would be sufficient to complete the project. As I mentioned, there, there's still a need for housing, so that will be at the commission's discretion on, on what you'd like to choose. But I would be in some discussions with Mr. Suggs to identify, so that when I come back before you, we would have some projects kind of in mind that you might wanna look at, and, and we'd make a decision at that point on whether you'd wanna do another housing grant or if you'd like to do the neighborhood revitalization program.
Scott, we look forward to that.
Okay.
Thank you for working with Mr. Suggs on that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We've enjoyed working with the county again. It's, it's been a very successful program, so.
We wanna merge your money with Mr. Jim's money, and I think we can take care of Dunn's Creek.
It's a possibility.
Yes, sir, Mr. Suggs.
I just wanna say it's a pleasure to see Scott here today. I had the opportunity to work with Mr. Modisette in a previous position. And the, the representation that he gave, gave our community at that point was outstanding. I'm, I was excited seeing him on the agenda today, so I'm looking forward to working with you again, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs. I am too.
Thank you. All right, good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, we're gonna hurry up to the next two real quick. Russ Mattos, the Toy Tour. All right, we'll skip to the next one. Cheryl Lynn, Small Business Development Center Quarterly Report.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. How's everybody doing?
Good. I always enjoy your presentations, so.
I believe you should have a quarterly impact report along with a success story. The Bar Trib Inn finally opened after five years of deciding what to do, where to go, how to solve problems. So that's good news for us. I did wanna highlight with Hurricane Irma, the governor enacted the Florida State Bridge Loan Program. The Florida SBDC are the administrators of that program, and to date, we've done over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in loans. that program, and to date, we've done over $350,000 in loans to Putnam County businesses.
Wow.
Obviously, the bridge loan is no cost, no interest, and it's to bridge that gap from when insurance funds are going to come in and they need to get up and running quicker, or they're going to apply for a disaster recovery loan through the SBA. We've had about 17 businesses apply for SBA disaster recovery loans. None have closed thus far. Spoke to an SBA specialist on Monday, and she asked, "How can we help?" And I said, "Well, let's get some of these monies to Putnam County." You know, some of them have applied for this over four weeks ago, and they're claiming that there's a four-week turnaround. So businesses are going to experience delays. If they need any assistance, any questions, they can come see us, and we'll help navigate through the process. What I've advised everybody is to stay on top of the SBA weekly. Be that squeaky wheel.
Yeah.
Another thing that I wanted to highlight, we did our first-ever Teen Entrepreneur Summit. We chose some high school students that lived in the Palacka Housing Authority. There were 15 that were qualified by their counselors. We spent the day inside the Panther Den, inside the fishbowl, as all the other students were going by on their breaks, and we took them through the experience of what it's like to have your own business, get into business, what you need to do to plan and prepare. So we started off with a business owner, Alex Sharp, who's got a real estate development side, and Pizza Boys. Soon as they went into Pizza Boys, everybody was, "Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah!" So they got really involved and asked a lot of questions. Then we had our web specialist out of UNF come down and explain to them how they can be a micro-influencer, and how to use social media to make some money. They were very, very interested in that. Then we had them go through a working lunch. The question did came up, say, "Why can't we take a lunch break?" And we told them, "Sometimes you don't get a lunch break, being a business owner, you've got to work through the process." And through the lunch break, they had to create a product that they could market and put a little mini-business plan together. So there were potato chips, stack holders, pipe cleaners, old CDs, floppy disks, paper towel holders, just stuff in the middle of the table, and they had to use their imagination to create a product. Amazing what they came up with. We had a cost-sharing electric car that they came up with. We had a hover skates, we had the hoverboard, but they created skates that can turn into rockets. We had one group that put three projects together, three little products together that they could market, an automatic refilling candy dispenser, go figure, where it could sense on its own that it needed to order the candy and fill back up. And then they also had a, which I thought was super, super creative, a little watch that could digitize your being in a second location, and their example was, so if you had volleyball practice, but you also had tutoring, you could be at volleyball and be at tutoring, and then your information would gather together at night, so you'd be able to do two things and clone yourself. So it was very, very exciting. The big takeaway, when we asked the students, what was it that they learned?
None of this is patented, right?
None of it's patented.
Yeah.
The feedback from all of the students was, "You can own your own business, but you have to put a plan together." So huge checkmark, success for the day, in my book, and I think the students, students really enjoyed it. So next year, we're hoping to open it up to all the high schools, and have select students that are achievers come together from all the high schools in one location and do another day-long event. So we're hoping to move forward with that as well. We happen to answer any questions you may have concerning the, the numbers you see in front of you, or anything else. Mr. Leibel?
Mr. Leibel.
I will. 2016, we seem to spike in capital investment, and just overall, the 17 numbers are off a little bit. Although, I'm not alarmed, they're still very large. But what about that one category?
It varies. It fluctuates. It just depends on where people are at a point in time. For example, Ms. Kreider waited five years to put her business together. So it's just a matter of ebbs and flows. Sometimes it's more business plans, sometimes it's more financing, it just depends. Those numbers will change come the end of the year, because obviously we had all the hurricane numbers and loans that are, that are going through with additional investment that businesses had to make, so those numbers will adjust.
Okay, I'm still very pleased.
It just, it just varies its timing. First couple of years, we had like no capital investment, no loans, and about the third year, it started to really hit.
Yeah.
So it just takes time.
For the record, I think the Teen Entrepreneur Workshop or Summit is just a great, great idea. It really is. You put a spark in some young person's head.
That's right.
Yeah, there's a bunch of them that, "Can I come see you too?" I said, "Absolutely."
There you go.
So we'll see.
That's right.
Stop exporting our knowledge from Putnam County, keep them here.
Commissioners, any other questions from this? Ms. Cheryl, thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
We'll see you next year.
We'll see you soon. Thank you. We're going to take one more, then we're going to do a break. Mr. Mattos, Toy Tour, please come to the podium, please, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, commissioners, thank you for giving me a little bit of your time.
If you will speak right into the microphone, sir.
Thank you for giving me a little bit of your time.
You're welcome, sir.
A long while ago, I came up with an idea that I could get all my friends together, and we could run our boats like mad dogs with our tails on fire, and use an excuse giving toys to kids. Well, we've done that, but as the years went by, it became a bigger and bigger and bigger thing. It came a situation of caring and sharing and camaraderie between the boaters. And we have found a home in Palacka. The river is excellent, and we get respect and safety and are accommodated by the sheriff's office, and we collect about $15,000 worth of toys, and we leave them right here in Putnam County. With, and what we're asking is, as my health demises, that I am able to seek a little bit of help from the sheriff's office, and perhaps the offices of public safety or fire and safety guys, to collect the toys on the dock. My guests come from as far away as California, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, from organizations like Boat Freaks, Offshore Only, Powerboat Nation, and we thoroughly enjoy this situation. Unfortunately, Russ Mattos, aka Race Boat Russ, is the one-man monkey show. And I was, yes, we do have guests come from all over the nation, but unfortunately, we don't get much response from the local community. Your yacht club has some, seems like they have some other agenda, and for as many boats as I see in driveways, we only have one guest from, from the Putnam County area that comes. Now, we have about over 100, about 250, 300 guests. It averages about 70 or 80 boats, boats ranging in range from the $500 backyard rebuild to the world's most expensive pleasure boat. And I was just hoping that maybe I could secure a point of contact or a situation here where I can communicate a little bit further and a little bit better. Here, also, I brought a flyer with me, seeing if perchance the county might want to help sponsor this situation. The event is free to come to. Put your boat in the water, run down the river and deposit the toy there. But there are other situations that money makes it happen. In these situations, I, I thank you for your attention, and I invite you to come on down. Your mayor, your last two mayors have enjoyed participating in these events, and I would invite you to come on down. It's going to be December, the second weekend in December, I think that's the 8th and 9th.
Right.
And come on down, you'll see an amazing show.
Why don't you get with, why don't you get with our county administrator when he gets feeling better, Mr. Suggs over here, and he will, you know, brief him on it, and then he will enlighten us about all the things that are going on. I know Colonel Wells is up, and he'd like to speak about it also, so.
Good, Russ, how are you? Good to see you again, buddy.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we have, for the last several years, we've been helping out the docks, and, and, yeah, so. What, what, this is a two-day event, and generally, these boaters come into town from across Florida, a lot of them out of Jacksonville, and, and, yeah, the Carolinas, believe it or not, and they'll stay in one of the hotels, typically Crystal Cove, maybe this year, you may see a lot at the Hampton. And then the first day, they take a run with their tails on fire. He's not exaggerating, I know we've clocked them at 88, 89 miles an hour in the river. So they'll run down, or go down Dunn's Creek, and they'll hit Three Bananas, they have a lunch issue, a lunch day down there. Then they stay in the hotel overnight, the next day, they run the river south to Alacca, where usually our deputies, and sometimes Alacca PD meets them at the dock, collects the toys, and then we ate in the distribution. One of the things I know is going to come up this year, so that's why I wanted to stay, stand up and mention to you. One, yes, we'll obviously help with the event. This is a very responsible group. The sheriff's office always participates in their captains' meetings. We do a lot of safety briefings with them, and we get them through some of the rules and regulations, and they've always been very cooperative. And we obviously had the flooding issue, I know that's going to come up this year. So as our agreement is, if we agree to do the assistance and to do the escort through Dunn's Creek, we will be at the, water continues, we'll be at idle speed, no wake, through the residential areas, and then we'll also request the same compliance for them through the Sportsman Harbor area, and this group has always been good to comply. Our vessels will be on the water for safety reasons. We can't truly escort them through those areas, because we can't keep up with them, but we will work these, these flooded areas and, and participate to make sure this is a safe event with a special concern of the flooding this year. So you can count on us, you know how to get in touch with me. I'll let my marine unit commander know we spoke, and we'll always be there for you, and we'll talk more about some flooding issues that we're having, and I know that these people will cooperate with us, because you talk about wakes. Some of these boats are, what's the average length on some of these big ones? 38, 36 feet? They're, they're big.
Oh, also, if you would like, also, if you would like to see the event, Powerboat Nation has put a video on YouTube, so everybody jump to your phone and go to Powerboat Nation Toys. And there you will see an aerial view of some of the boats that docked at Anderson's, and very nice video that they put together for us. And I'd like to point out that your, your community is praised throughout all these magazines, talking about what the paradise, what a paradise for boating Putnam County is. Poker Runs America Magazine, Boat Freaks Magazine, Offshore Only, Speed on the Water, and then there's another one that I can't remember.
That's fine.
But I can't thank you enough.
Well, thank you for bringing that to us, and you get with Mr. Suggs, and we will be briefed on it later on. Thank you very much. Commissioners, I'd like to take a three-minute recess, if that's all right with you?
That's all.
Okay, three minutes. Okay, three minutes. Tony, are you ready? I think we're on that one. We're on that one. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay, you ready to start, Tony? All right, we're going to call our meeting back to order, Board of County Commission meeting. We have a nine-thirty certen public hearing. Proposed ordinance amending section forty-six point two-six, boating restriction, restricted areas, page one-eighty-seven to one-eighty-nine. Mr. Manning, our attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this revision before you today is a revision to the county's current ordinance for a slow-speed minimum wake zone in the Dunn's Creek area. This is a revision to the existing ordinance that I'm bringing forward today as, as directed by you all in a meeting earlier this month. As you can see, the revisions are to the first part of the ordinance, and I'll go ahead and redo those so you can see exactly what the changes are. What it would say is, and the new parts are underlined, "Due to boat wakes causing the overflow of septic systems along the shoreline during periods of high water, the purpose of this section is to regulate for the protection of health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Putnam County and the boating public, the speed and operation of vessel traffic on certain Putnam County waterways. Provisions of Florida Statute, section three-twenty-seven authorize the county to adopt ordinances relating to operation of vessels following slow-speed slash minimum-wake zone is created. During flooding, a slow-speed slash minimum-wake zone from shoreline to shoreline in Dunn's Creek, from Butler Drive to Cleo Lane, as depicted in drawing A attached here, too. This restriction shall be in effect and enforceable when the Saint John's River is twelve feet or higher, as indicated by the Dunn's Creek gauge operated or reported by the U.S. Geological Survey, Survey's National Weather, National Water Information System, gauge number USGS You'll see that the change in height from eleven and a half to twelve there, that is, that changes because we, we got information since the ordinance was originally passed that that is what the state considers the flood stage at twelve feet and not at eleven and a half, so that's why that particular change was made.
Okay. Good deal. All right, this is a public hearing. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Manning on this before I open up to the public?
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question. I'm assuming that the existing ordinance had some enforcement in it and things such as that. These are just the changes that we requested you to make?
Correct.
That was all, Mr. Chairman.
While we're on that, let's debate it a little bit. This still is not enforceable. I mean, people comply through the spirit of the request of the ordinance, but as I remember last time and this time, we don't have teeth in it, so to speak. We can't hold, we can't ticket citation somebody.
Correct. Joe?
Well, hang on a minute. Come up to the podium, Colonel Wells.
If I might while he's coming up. The, the current state statutes and regulations require that, that the state approved, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife approved the regulation. And, and to answer Commissioner Lible's question, according to the way those statutes and regulations are currently written, I do not believe that this would be enforceable or will be approved. We'll certainly go ahead and make that request.
No. It wasn't last time, and you made these changes, which are good. They're good for the spirit, and we do want to protect those residents along that creek, but this is not enforceable. I don't want anybody to be misled by that.
Well, it's not right now, but we could get approved. I mean, there could be a chance that they approve this ordinance. But I think the question really was, from Mr. Lible, is there any enforcement on tickets and citations that can be writ? And that's where Mr. Wells, Colonel Wells.
If it's approved. That's where Mr. Manning comes in.
Right. If, if it's approved, correct me if I'm wrong, but the issue we were running into is we will, we would never get an ordinance approved for the protection of property. There had to be a protection of life safety. So is, is, is the wording involving the septic tanks, is that new to this addition?
Yes.
So I'm wondering if that wording involving the septic tanks could put personal safety in danger, if we might have a hope of getting approved this time. If we get approved by the U.S. Fish and everybody that we need, then we get enforceable teeth, so.
Well, and that, and that's the reason why I put that in there, for the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Putnam County and the boating public. The, the regulations were clear that it has to be for the protection of the boating public in order to get approved. But the regulations also require credible evidence that, that this is going to do that. And I think that may be where, where we are going to run into an issue, the way it's currently written, the regulations and statute. Again, that may change.
Mr. Suggs.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This ordinance was, was reworded and brought back at the direction of the County Commission. We understand that the ordinance will pass here today by, by statute is not enforceable. We understand that. This was a draft and ordinance that was requested by the County Commission to come back, to put in front of those folks who will make that final decision, and it will give us an opportunity as a, as an elected body to then go to Tallahassee, if that's what was required, to argue for the benefit of this ordinance. We understand that as of today, whatever passes here today is not enforceable until we get that other signature, so to speak, on, on the ordinance at approval. But this is the attempt to bring back the ordinance that was requested by the County Commission in order to be able to put in front of those folks to make that final decision. So that's what the attempt here today is.
And correct?
They're certainly, I think, a lot closer, because the previous ordinance, in my recollection serves, stated only for the protection of property. This has added the two requirements, and I think there's certainly evidence on hand that perhaps the Health Department could help us with on what happens when those septic systems have freshwater intrusion down there. But I agree with Mr. Manning. I think our uphill battle here may be the, the safety of the public boating, simply because maybe by God's good graces only at this time, we've not had any significant boating accidents in that area. It would solely be on the safety of the civilians or the citizens along the shoreline, so certainly worth a try.
And I think the other thing to, to consider, and we'll ask the state to consider, is, you know, when we do have flooding, there's also debris.
Absolutely.
Debris that floats out into the river, and that, you know, is a hazard to the boating public in general, so.
Part of, even, there's area where even parts of the docks, and we have some photographic evidence where parts of the docks are submerged, and you could easily hit a dock if you're unfamiliar with that area, got too close to the shorelines. Sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Manning, do we need to go back and strike some of the language that we know didn't meet the code from the previous version? Because we added this language, which is wonderful, but did, do you think we need to go back and strike some of the other language that we know that would prevent this from being approved by the state?
You know, I don't see any language in there that would, that would cause that, that issue, which is why when I went through it, I didn't do that. I didn't see anything in there that was, that was, you know, the problem, that they were like, oh, no, you're doing it for this reason. So.
That will be.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is anybody here?
I've got a, I've got a question and a comment. If I'm reading this map correctly, where it starts at Butler, which is south of where the Dunn's Creek Bridge is, this really doesn't take into consideration the Boca Raton Road and, and those people at the very beginning of Dunn's Creek. And I don't have my notes with me, but I'm quite sure I had a complaint about, you know, wakes in that area coming over the, their bulkheads, you know, into their yard, which would, you know, create the water and the, and bringing out the, the septic sewage that you're talking about. And then, so I didn't know why we didn't go up further with the no-wake zone. And does this address areas in other parts of the river? Because we have an issue in Wallaca at Sportsman's Harbor, and it's the same situation, is waters going over their bulkheads, you know, into their yards. I assume they're on septic, so they may be, they're having the same issue there, and there may be issues at another time with a storm or hurricane that we may have to go further south or other parts of the river. So I thought maybe that the, this would be drafted where we could, as deemed necessary, be able to put in temporary no-wake zones as we saw fit, if that makes sense. I was surprised that it's just Dunn's Creek is what we're looking at.
Well, again, we have to be specific according to the statute, and the, what the area you see here is the existing area under the current ordinance. However, if, if you all direct me to expand on this area and add other areas, could certainly do that and bring it back.
Commissioners?
That's, that's what I would like to do.
I would like to see it expanded also.
Expanded, or maybe workshop this and talk about it and get specific areas, get some public input, and bring it to a workshop to where we can designate those areas before we, before we send it.
Just one thing to clarify. I am relatively certain that the statute will require separate ordinance anytime there's a break in the area. So if you have a distance where there, you are not considering, then you'll need a separate ordinance. So I think we're going to need a separate ordinance for Sportsman Harbor, perhaps Federal Point, anywhere that you want to. I think they could all be awarded exactly the same, but I think they're going to need separate ordinance numbers.
Yeah, you could be right.
What about, on, what about, Mr. Chairman, sorry. What about the area from the Dunn's Creek Bridge back towards that other little tributary that goes to the river on the map? Is that too large of a break in there to have the same ordinance? Or do we need to think about a separate ordinance for that little area, too?
You, you know, I, I'll have to look at that specifically. I couldn't, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, I'd have to look at the exact language again in the statute and the regulations.
Not trying to inconvenience the, the boaters, and that we don't want this no-wake zone to be so long that nobody's going to pay any attention to it. So I get that part of it, and, but by the same token, I don't know that it would do any, I don't know that people would listen if you did a little small one up there north of the, or west, west of the bridge. And then had an open area, or you had to just ride with nobody being there until you got down the houses again, and then went back to a no-wake zone. I mean, you need to use some common sense in this along with what you'd like to get done. So, but I, I'm with Mr. Pickens. I'm with Commissioner Pickens, sorry. Maybe we do need to workshop this just a little bit. As bad as we all want it done, the water's starting to recede. And so once it, maybe by the time this happens again, heaven forbid if it does, then maybe we'll have it in place then and even get fortunate enough to have it approved.
I'd like to see another workshop, because I want to discuss this in full detail. The gentleman was just here with his organization that comes with the Toys for Tots, it used to be called, and the Big Boat Run. They come because we don't have speed limits. They can bring those machines here and run them. There are many places in Florida they cannot. So we got, we're walking, we're, we could potentially harm our well-being if we're not careful with this ordinance.
I don't disagree with what you say, but if it comes to them guys coming to town, are we ruining what everybody's home that lives along Dunn's Creek?
I'm not advocating for that, but it could lead to permanent situations.
No, I'm not for that. I'll tell you, I'll tell you right now, we're in a workshop or however, I'm not for a permanent wake zone. Only when the water reaches flood state.
Well, this says this restriction shall be in effect and enforceable when the Saint John's River level is twelve feet or higher.
Yes, sir. I read, I read that carefully.
Well, I'd just like to have a comprehensive conversation on it, looking into the future.
All right.
I also want to make, make it very clear, I am not in favor of any permanent no-wake zone.
Let's talk about it.
At this point.
I agree.
All right, so I think the consensus here is to go back to workshop, and, but it is a public hearing, so I do need to open it up for any public. Mr. Suggs, you had your hand up and you wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, just a follow-up conversation here with the Commissioners. Absolutely, I think it's imperative that we have a workshop. I just want to remind us that, you know, just a few minutes ago, we were talking about being in a burn ban.
Right.
You know, and, and then all of a sudden, we got all this rain. If this has not done anything, it's showed us some of the areas of concern that we need to be looking into the future about, so that we can put things in place today that may have benefit us and our citizens in the future. And I think this is a, a prime example of what we're trying to do. I don't think if we pass the ordinance here today that we'll have enough time with, with the other parties that need to review it and then approve it to get it in place to do any thing for this, for this particular event. But I do think what we need to do is be mindful of that and put things in place that will benefit us and our citizens in the future. So I think we need to workshop this, and I think we need to push it forward and show our citizens that live on the river that I do have those facilities out there that are, that are compromised during these events, that we actually have looked at, have taken an opportunity to look at and see what we can do to protect them in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs. Okay, so is there anybody here in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith?
As, as the public, I would like to make a comment, please.
Please do, sir.
First, early on the news this morning, I did see a story about sea level rise as it related to New York City, and that they are estimating that their hundred-year flood event could come about every five years. And they showed their buildings downtown with flooded first floors, and they're expecting that to be more frequent. And so as you talk about an ordinance today that may or may not be enforceable, I still say that there are protocols that should be put into place that could minimize and notify the public of these events when they happen in our county. And you all that have been sitting here long enough know these seem to be coming more frequently than they have in the past. So I would suggest that, in addition to this, that you also go ahead and memorialize what happens when this starts to happen. And that could involve the Sheriff's Office, it could involve the Coast Guard, it can involve the Game and Fish Commission, it should involve the municipalities that have access, it should involve the volunteer fire stations that have assets that they could put to this, and also bass clubs and those people that live in the area, so that you could mobilize immediately some effort when this starts to happen. Because what happens is, is this event comes usually within a day or two, and then it takes us weeks to try to have some response. There should be a protocol in place that says when this event happens, the twelve-foot gets reached, we put assets on, in that area of the river. I know the sheriff, they can have citizen folks that help, give them a blue light, put it on the front of a boat, and they can sit out there. I know I always do better with traffic rules when there's a sheriff sitting next to me in a sheriff's car. It's just, they do. In fact, today, when we took the picture for the Polio proclamation, and the sheriff was standing behind me, made me a little nervous. So I just think that in these events, getting people out in those areas that are trying to demonstrate that there's an issue going on, you could do that in the regions that have flooding, like Dunn's Creek, Sportsman's Harbor, any of those others, and have people locally that are ready to go. And this commission moved quickly after the last discussion. They got signs out, the sheriff was out handing them out, and that's probably made a huge difference to a lot of folks that may not know that their wake is causing a problem. But I think we should not rely on this only as our only method to minimize damage from high water, because it is coming again. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for those comments. Well, well received. You got that, Mr. Suggs?
Yes, sir, and, you know, just absolutely correct. I think all those, all those entities need to be involved with us, and that, that will benefit everyone, you know, and, and, you know, the, the ordinance that Mr. Manning has brought forward is, is really a, it was a quick turnaround to get the ordinance back in front of you folks, so we can actually have this discussion. And I think it's been very positive, and, and it's an opportunity for, for us to continue moving forward on this, on this issue.
Okay, is there anybody else wanting to speak in favor from the public on this ordinance? Okay, anybody against this ordinance? All right, seen none. My suggestion is that we just send this back to workshop and get with Commissioner Pickens and all of us individually on areas of concern. Mr. Manning, we'll avail ourselves to you also of the areas that we see are necessary concern, and we'll see this back at a workshop.
Very good.
All right, planning development, public hearings, first reading, Mr. Hammond's, item number CA seventeen zero zero seven, ordinance amending Article Seven of Land Development Code, adding section exempting handicap access ramps from required setbacks for certain residential property. Mr. Hammond, I think you deserve a hand, too. Thank you. This has long been needing to come, so thank you very much.
The first amendment I have for you this morning, Code Amendment seventeen dash zero zero seven. Specifically, this is a short amendment to correct or to help a longstanding problem we have in the department. You have a variety of different charitable groups, veterans groups, et cetera, in the county who frequently offer this service of building handicap ramps. And ramps in general have been a problem with, with residences. Many times, the residences are quite old and somewhat space confined, maybe as close to the setbacks on all sides as possible, and in some cases, they're old enough that they're even closer than our setbacks allow. But what this would do essentially is allow those handicap ramps to be placed in order to provide access to these residential units. and basically be exempt from the setbacks. And still will not allow them to go into, uh, a right-of-way or off-the-property or into an easement of record. But it will then keep property owners from having to gerrymander the, some odd configuration that doesn't work to try to give somebody access to a house.
Right.
Um, so that's what we're trying to do, is give them a break under the code. So it's neither a problem for us nor for those folks who are providing these things. This is the first reading of this ordinance. There will be, uh, a second hearing on it at five oh five, tentatively scheduled October...
No.
No October?
November.
Excuse me, November fourteenth, I believe.
Yes, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Hammond concerning this item? Anybody from the public wishing to speak? Alright, hearing none. We've heard our first reading. Do we need to take action, Mr. Manning, or just we heard our reading and move forward?
No, um, we could just move forward at this point unless somebody makes a motion that we not move forward.
Alright, we're moving forward.
The second ordinance that I have for you is code amendment seventeen dash zero zero eight, and ordinance of the County of Putnam, State of Florida, amending Article Twelve of the Putnam County Land Development Code by adding subsection twelve point O two, point O four, requiring inspection and review of changes in use and/or occupancy of certain structures, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Specifically, as you will recall, uh, back in the spring, the county did repeal its business tax receipt ordinance, and that was done because of a variety of pushes at the state level that were making the thing kind of, of useless as a business tax, which is what it was intended to be. Uh, it was for most counties, costing more to administer than it was actually worth. But the county did repeal it. But what we lose, um, and when I say we, I'm talking planning, zoning, building, fire, health. What we lose is the ability to know, um, and inspect when property owners take new space, or, excuse me, properties, uh, maybe, uh, property gets leased to a new individual. Somebody goes in there, does tenant improvements inside, uh, makes changes, or tries to occupy space that they don't have proper parking for. There are a lot of things that need to be looked at, just so you don't get ten pounds in a five-pound bag. That's what this is intended to do. Most jurisdictions, virtually all the jurisdictions that I've had the pleasure of being associated with, had such change of use ordinance. We always called them commercial name changes in southwest Florida. It just triggers an inspection. Already, under the Florida Building Code and Fire Codes, building and fire already have this right. Now, the reality is that they may or may not actually come in and ask a question now. But building and fire have the right to assert this. What I'm trying to do is put it specifically in the Land Development Code so that zoning has a chance to look at it. And then we communicate with health. 'Cause again, that's a big problem in this county where individual uses go into a location and exceed the capacity of their septic systems. And most everything is on septic system here. So again, this is, this is a practical ordinance for us. It may be a little bit of, a little bit cumbersome, certainly to start out, but it's a practical ordinance for us, just to make sure that it doesn't cause problems. When businesses move, businesses take new space, and this is oriented toward business. This is not oriented toward residences.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
Mr. Hammond, somewhere in the, in the ordinance that you have, the portion that we don't have in front of us, excuse me, um, I hope you didn't make me sick. Is there something in here that gives us a definition of what you think change of use is as far as this ordinance? Um, I think that's what this whole paragraph is, uh, is based on, is change of use, of course. But what your interpretation of change of use is? If a business, if a business has an office and they sell widgets, and they, and a, another, a week, a month, six months later, they come in and they're in office, but they sell insurance, it's still an office. So I don't think that we need to generate an inspection for them if they're basically doing retail or they're basically doing office or whatever. Now, I get it if it were going from, uh, an insurance office to an internet cafe. That's definitely, and that's a stretch, but that's definitely a change in use by all means. Uh, but I, I guess I would like to know where or if it has a definition of, of the change in use.
And under the, what we have written in this draft, um, it's change of use or occupancy. Uh, our intent is not to necessarily require a full-blown inspection. The point is that they actually come, talk to us. If it's something like an office for an office, well, we'll be able to sign off at, at the counter and move them on. It won't be a change. But if there's, if the new business has some flammable or toxic materials, well, fire needs to know about it. And, you know, that will trigger at least an inspection by fire. If they're doing tenant improvements inside, moving electrical, stuff like that, it'll trigger a building inspection, probably require a building permit. Well, that's what we're after, is just that it triggers an inspection. When we had the business tax receipt, well, the business tax receipt folks, when they originally got one, had to come through our office and get a sign-off. In many cases, it was just very simple, we could sign off at, at the desk. But in many cases, um, if a flag was thrown, I mean, if we had a, had an issue, then we would, um, make sure that, uh, we did the necessary review and triggered the necessary inspections. But it's not necessarily an absolute that we're gonna go do an inspection. We certainly don't wanna do an inspection, nor do we have enough people to do inspections where one's not needed. But what we are trying to do is catch uses like our use de jour currently is the, the internet cafes. Well, when one of those goes into a location where, um, they're having to do all kinds of electrical work and, and changing the occupancy, overloading the septic systems, those are the kinds of things we really need to know about.
Mr. Turner?
Mr. Manning? Mr. Turner? He would like to answer your question?
Um, the, the Land Development Code, um, under our different zoning areas, does list different uses. Um, and, uh, and this would apply where one of those listed uses was, was changed. And that would be a change of use. So if it's retail to retail, that would not be a change of use. That's, that's within one of the zoning categories.
But it would be a change of occupancy?
It may be, it may not be.
Trigger an inspection based on J.C. Penney versus Kmart?
You're right, in that case it would, in that case it would. But not necessarily an inspection, it would just require them to come in and...
It could have an inspection.
Could.
It could, yeah. Mr. Turner?
And I guess that's where I'm having a little heartburn over this, is that I don't really have a problem if we change use as far as going from one's, one, uh, business that's not allowed to be in a certain zoning category or whatever, or, or there's not, or they're, they're chang, clearly changing use. I don't really have a problem with it, but if they're, if they're going, if they're just changing occupancy, then where do we draw the line? If I sell you my business and you don't even move, we just changed occupancy, but you own it instead of me. Is that supposed to trigger an inspection for everybody to start coming and looking?
Yeah.
I don't think so. I think that's just adding bureaucracy where bureaucracy is not needed. So, you know, I understand the problem, but we're trying to correct here. I get it completely, but I don't wanna use a baseball bat to kill a gnat here. You know, let's try and figure out a way to do this without triggering an inspection on anybody that moves in any building around here, even if it's a previously used building or changes any occupancy at any time that happens. You know, let's try to figure out a better way to do this, maybe.
My question was, it was far over, it seemed to me it was overreaching. Mr. Goddard, do you have a question?
I guess I looked at it several different ways. I looked at it as in, uh, like Mr. Hammond's was saying, if it is an insurance building, move, a person moving into an insurance, probably wouldn't even trigger an inspection. But I'm more concerned with the occupancy on either side of that building. We are to protect those business owners. You have somebody go in there that alters the electrical or, uh, I, I think it's, uh, it doesn't have to be a tool that we beat them to death with, but I think we should have the opportunity to go do the inspection to, to not just protect the, the public that would be going into that store, but on either side or surrounding that. I, I, I agree that we need it.
Mr. Law?
I, I'm agreeing with Commissioner Turner, wholeheartedly. We get a black eye at Planning and Development for being too regulatory, uh, and it's no fault of our own. But I don't feel the need to bring the department, the State Department of Environmental Health into our request as no more than I do the fire service either. They should be on their own. I would like to see something that would trip the switch that says, uh, we need a zoning check or something on a new business. There's a problem, the business receipts, what they did, if nothing else, they turned the, the switch on and said, I'm here.
That's right.
What do I need to do? You don't have that now, and you, you hadn't brought anything to the table today for a new business. How do you get to a, a entrepreneur that wants to sell widgets at this location tomorrow? How do they know that they need to do all this? They don't.
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, they're not gonna know. And so, it's just gonna become an enforcement action on them is what's gonna happen.
And that's where we get the black eye.
More black eyes and more problems and what have you. I understand what we're trying to correct here, I just don't know that we're going about it in the right, in the right manner.
I would like to have a conversation, a dialogue on this in a workshop and come up with some innovation. Because, you know, on one hand, and this protects your department, Brian, I, I'm not being critical of it, but, you know, um, you guys get hassled a lot for being a regulatory agency. It's the nature of your business, but how can we soften that? Maybe we can put our heads together and come up with some kinda alternative or a mechanism that can soften that and have people realize that this is all part of becoming a businessperson.
Unfortunately, that one of the hardest things, Mr. Chairman, if may, one of the hardest things in this is gonna be just, how does somebody know they're even supposed to come at all?
Well, that's what we need to talk about.
I, I mean, I mean, to, to put an ordinance in place that would start a code's proceeding, I don't know is a good idea unless we can figure out a way to make the public aware enough to where they don't have to have a code's proceeding when they're truly innocent.
That's why I wanna workshop this. It's worth talking about.
And that's one of my questions I had written, how will they be notified? You know, when you look at the Chamber of Commerce and they, their membership is around six hundred businesses, but there's about two thousand located in throughout Putnam County, mom and pops and home businesses and things like that that are operating currently. How do they know? How did they, how would I have known when I started my business that I needed to come get a checked off before, from you, before we did this?
How would the public ever know about anything you do if they, A, are not reading the newspaper for legal ads or do not watch our webpages for the results? Um, we would have to do some ad, advertising essentially on our websites and reach out to the Chamber of Commerce. That's what we do with every ordinance, any ordinance.
You know, Mr. Hammond, when you, when you start a business like I did, and a lot of us up here did, you start in a back room around some file cabinets, selling insurance or whatever, and you grow yourself out of that. And I'm not so sure, under today's regulatory environment, I could've started in the back room of Nancy Sable Realty, selling insurance with one-door access and using her bathroom. And I think, but I became very successful, and I think we need to encourage that as we go forward here. So I, I'm with the rest of the commissioners. I don't think we're ready for primetime on this, and I have some issues with, I think we are far overreaching.
Is it your wish that we withdraw this application?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, uh, you know, just, just to bring this, uh, full circle, so I understand what it is that we're gonna be, be moving forward into. Uh, Mr. Hammond's has, has brought up several concerns, and one of them was the notification process that, that we did have in place with the BTRs. And now that we don't have that, we, we gotta try to find some type of mechanism and, and put something in place that will allow us to, as Commissioner Goddard alluded to, protect the, the health and safety of those surrounding businesses. Uh, case in point was when, or example, I should say, is, uh, the city of Palaca, we had a, uh, an old shopping center that, that went out of business and the, uh, the corporate office leased it to another, uh, organization to bring in, um, uh, for, I guess, uh, like a bouncy house-type deal where they had kids come in and play inside and all that. But not realizing that the zoning would change on that and the requirements would change on that, where you had to put in a sprinkler system, you had to put in an alarm system, you had to put in, you know, uh, extra, uh, ingress egress, you know, in case of emergencies. Those are the things that we're concerned with, and I don't disagree at all, being from the regulatory side that I was early in my career, that we do not need to get heavy-handed in government, we just do not. I, I totally agree with that. But what we do need to do is walk that fine line of what's, what's needed and, and what's proper. And, uh, so I think, Brian, I think you've done a, a great job of getting this in front of us. Again, it goes right back, and you're gonna get tired of me saying this, I'm sure, but it gives us an opportunity to have this public dialogue on what it is that we need to be looking at and working on. And we can bring it back to a workshop, and we can sit down with the five commissioners and figure out what that fine line is, because at the very, at the, the most important thing is that we put something in front of you folks that, uh, that's acceptable by you five, but also that it doesn't give us a black eye later on because we have become, uh, uh, overreaching and, and heavy-handed. But it is our responsibility to protect our, our, our community, so we'll, we'll need to bring something back.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for withdrawing that, we appreciate it, and we'll see it back in a workshop form pretty soon where we can vet it a little bit more.
Brian, we appreciate you making a shot at it, we truly do.
Well, this is, you know, the public needs to know that we do vet these things, and sometimes things change when they get here, and we need to be able to voice that concern. Gentlemen, next item is appointments. Is there any appointments that you wish to make on any of these boards? And we don't have to vote on them?
I was just gonna remind you of that, unless it is a, a board, full board appointment, they do not need to be voted on if they're individual, um, district-level appointments.
I'm a quick learner, Mr. Manning, so I got it.
Alright.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question?
You may.
I noticed that the people on the Contractors and Building Trades Examining Board, their terms are, three of them is coming up for December thirty-first. I understand that all three of them wish to be reappointed. Um, I would like to make that motion. I think we do have to vote on them because they're at-large members of that commission, unless I'm mistaken?
Yes, no, you're right.
Okay, so I would like to nominate those three people to, uh, to continue in their role on the Contractors and Building Trades Examiners Board.
And we have a proper motion by Commissioner Turner?
I'll second that.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any further discussion on the three at-large appointments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Okay, is there any other appointments? I'm going to nominate TJ Smith on the Fishing Fund Advisory Committee. He will be my district four appointee. Is there anybody else? Okay, hearing none, County Administrator, Mr. Terry Suck.
Mr. Chairman, I don't really think I have anything today.
Alright, well, we hope you feel better, sir. Thank you very much, and thank you for your engagement. And I do wanna say thank you for helping the Sheriff's Department go out there and deliver those no-wake signs in the, in the rain, and, uh, that you did. And we do appreciate our county administrator being, being that involved. County Attorney, Mr. Stacy Manning.
I have nothing further.
Okay. Mr. Tim Smith, Clerk of the Courts, you just passed out a wonderful document?
Yeah, thank you, Mr.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that. And this is a description of FEMA reimbursement money that we have received over the last couple of weeks. I know that you and others have been pushing for them to reimburse this for the funds expended from Hurricane Matthew. While this is not a huge sum, it is a sum totaling $76,000. And if you look at your sheet, you'll see that this is broken down by public work numbers. There's a federal component and a state component. Those get paid at the same time, which I was surprised at, but they do. And so we have received $76,000 of about 1.3 million that is owed to us. These dollars will be booked into this year's revenue stream. They will not go back and be rebooked back in last year. They will, so these are funds that come in and are available over the year. Hopefully, there'll be more of those that come in, and we'll keep track of those and keep you informed of where we are.
Thank you. And gentlemen, tomorrow morning, I'll be having, I'll be in a meeting with Senator Latvalla in Tallahassee about the reimbursement, and again, about the fiscally constrained counties and the importance of getting our reimbursement in a very timely fashion. So thank you, Mr. LaWell, for that, too.
Have we, on that same deal, I reached out to Representative Payne to do a little research, and I hate to say this, but officially, we have not asked for it. Now, there's a log of counties that have asked for their reimbursements. There's a process, in other words, that we're not familiar with, Mr. Smith, that I have, I can copy it for each of you. Want to take it tomorrow? That would be great, but the...
Well, we have asked for some of it, and then we re-asked for it again the other day.
In the form of a letter? We need to send it officially. I'll bring this to you before we leave today.
If we need an official letter from this board, we'll take it, but...
Oh, I know, but I don't think any of us... I'll bring it to workshop today for everybody. That'll make it legal, and we can all take a look at what I've found.
Okay.
Well, actually, Representative Payne's office has found.
But there was a, Mr. Suggs, correct me if I'm wrong, a few, what was it, after our last workshop, Mr. Simpson, is he in the audience? Yes. Mr. Simpson, would you like to come up? You and Mr. Gast, if I'm not mistaken, re-requested there. Is that correct? FEMA money, I mean, our money back from the state of Florida. Is that correct?
That is correct. Following the guidance from the state of Florida, we did, working with Mr. Gast, we did submit a new request, a new request for reimbursement for the county's three large PWs. Based on procedure, large PWs require a request for reimbursement, small PWs do not. And so we went ahead and submitted that request again.
Okay. Will you come to our workshop meeting, and you'll be privy to what Mr. LaWell will be bringing to it?
That's the wording they use, "not requested," which is odd. I know we have, so we'll compare notes.
So we requested it, now we re-requested it, and...
And the amount looks like it includes this storm as well as Matthew. They're combined together. I'll bring what I have. I'm telling you what I was saying.
The one thing that I've seen so far is the heat, the amount of heat that's been put on the state over this reimbursement issue has them guys tap dancing like the chicken on a hot stove.
That's right.
So, I mean, I'm not saying that we've jumped through every hoop that we're supposed to jump through, but it seems to me like a month ago when we started all this, or a month and a half ago when we started all this, everything was obligated, everything is fine, we're just making sure that everything's, you know, done just right. And since then, it seems to me like there's been a few things built in that weren't there a month and a half ago, or at least nobody could tell us. So I don't mind writing a letter, and I don't mind doing whatever we need to do to make them happy, but I do mind throwing them guys under the bus when I don't think those regulations were there two months ago. I think it's people up in Tallahassee covering theirself up.
That's precisely what I'm trying to say here today. I'm going to bring you a document. You're going to see a structure that was built at the state level to keep us in the dark. And I'll share it with you today.
Good. Shine some light on it, and thank you all for what you do. Mr. Gast, yes?
Just to give you a little update, as of Friday, our contractors have picked up 110,000 cubic yards of storm debris. That's more than we picked up in the six months after Matthew. We've already got that much up. So we are well going to exceed the expenditures in Matthew for this storm event.
Since you're standing there, I asked a question a month ago, maybe three weeks ago, about the ability, did you need more land to put debris? And you said no. But now I'm seeing, because Commissioner Alford, Skeet Alford had called me, prior commissioner, about using his property. Now I'm seeing we are using his property.
The contractor wanted to get more areas that does not have the county's liability to it. It is the contractor went out and negotiated several...
That's fine.
...different places to speed his rounds of getting things done.
Okay. I just wanted to ask that question. All right, good. Okay, Commissioner comments?
I got a couple of questions for you.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
If you just want to stand up there.
Don't leave.
Is there any help?
Yeah. Since you're there, anyway, I see more of a presence in South Putnam or District One with the contractors picking up, but some of the concerns that some of the citizens had is they will pick up some debris in an area and then leave some debris. And I can't say if they're picking up the large and leaving the small or vice versa. So I don't know if you could explain what's happening there?
There's a lot of variables in there. And I had a call yesterday from Round Lake that there was, the entire roads picked up except for three piles down by 19th. And I said, "Okay, I've got to come out and look at it." Well, what it was, it was a self loader vehicle. It's one with the clamshell that parks on the road, reaches over, picks it up, places it in the truck. Well, these people's oak tree limbs weren't five foot above their pile. The guy could not get the boom in, grab the stuff, lift it up, and load it. So that has, you know, that truck's got to go on by and leave it, and later a tractor will have to come in, pick it up, and then place it in the trailers. We've had several things that were getting left on the south end, particularly Comcast replaced several cables...
Cables, yeah.
...and just dropped their cables on top of the piles. And we would have to skip those because, you know, we don't know if they're, you know, drop cables connecting something, or if it's, you know, active, what it is. So those have to get skipped. Some of the areas, you'll see the large limbs being left because a lot of times that has to be done with one of the self loaders. Because if you take a tractor and you take that 600-pound log, lift it up and drop it over the side of the trailer, it's going to punch a hole in the bottom of the trailer. So it's got to be able to be placed down in. The long, the large stumps will be the last thing, and some of the very large trees that haven't been, you know, the ones that big around, will be some of the last things picked up because they will take, you know, cranes and lowboys to get those things out. So they're trying. Some places, they started and backed out of because it was just too wet. The ground was, I mean, they were making more of a mess than cleaning up. So they're working at it, and in two months, they've got as much as we did in the entire six months after Matthew, but we're countywide. Melrose is going to be extremely heavy, too. Crescent City was heavy. Melrose is heavy.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that I've also noticed is just as soon as they go through and pick it all up, the roads were, some roads in the county were so full that when the, as soon as they got through, within two days, they had filled back up again because nobody had anywhere to put what was still laying out there. So some of the areas where they did make a pass, the road I live on, I know it filled right back up, and it didn't take long.
Right. Mr. Suggs, your question?
Yeah. Mr. Gast, if we could, when you hear concerns like we just heard from Commissioner Pickens, what is our protocol? Do we have someone? Because you know where they're running the routes at. You know from week to week where they're going to be. Do we have a system in place where we're doing any type of follow-up for insurance or what they are doing? And making a list of things that need to be followed up on?
We're basically running a punch list, which is items that either are monitored spot or the residents call in, and those are being forwarded on a regular basis to the contractor for follow-up.
Okay. What about construction debris? When will they make?
We will probably, I'm guessing it'll be three or four weeks, and then they'll probably cut one of the crews out to start picking up construction debris. Right now, we're just, you know, we're swamped with brush.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your hard work on that. Okay, Commissioner comments, starting to my right, Commissioner LaWell.
Why don't you start to your left, where I can remember?
Starting to my left, Commissioner Turner, then. Thank you. You're welcome.
Somebody wants to go first. Mr. Chairman, we were in a workshop last week, and we were discussing the equipment on the internet tower, the internet equipment on the towers. We're continuing to run that down, and I just wanted to bring it up as a commissioner comment and say that we do not need to do anything with that equipment. Even if it costs us some money to do whatever we need to do, we do not need to do anything with that equipment for, until I can finish with this work that I'm doing on those internet equipment towers. I mean, every organization that is out there trying to help, including Florida Association of Counties, has an internet initiative to trying to get broadband into rural Florida. I mean, it's the biggest, it's still the biggest, aggressivist campaign that everybody has. So this may turn out to be really good for us. Like I said, a little early for me to say, but whatever happens, we don't need to touch that equipment.
Understood. Thank you. Anything else?
That was it.
Mr. Pickens?
I'd just like to add to that. I mentioned in that workshop when we were discussing SBIC that Earl Bellingy had sent me an email. Earl is about that equipment, and he has that service at his house, that internet service. So Terry, I definitely want you to introduce yourself to Earl, because he's in the audience. You don't have to talk long because I know you're sick. I don't want to give that to Earl, but I'd like for y'all to exchange information. And Earl also said that Patrick Kennedy, the city manager in Crescent City, I believe, sat on that, on the board of that original group. What was the name of them?
North Florida Broadband.
Yeah, North Florida Broadband. You know what you said, Earl, that he was on that board?
Yes, sir.
So you might want to reach out to Patrick also to go along with what Terry's doing.
Commissioner Pickens, I think we're, not that I'm not going to ask for any help I can here at all, but I think we're a little past that. We've been contacted and talking to the chairman of the board, of that board, as well as people that were on that board, and we're at the next level, maybe even two up from right now, trying to find out or see if we can figure out who owns that equipment. And I think we're getting pretty close at the moment on who does. And so, Earl, I'll have, I'll take any help you can give me or anything because I'm not going to let this one go. I'm going to keep working on it because I think that's one of the biggest assets this county has, and we need to try and find a way to make it even a bigger asset for this county.
Mr. Pickens?
That's all.
Mr. LaWell, you ready?
Yeah, no.
Go ahead.
I have nothing. Of course, I want to thank everyone for being here, but I want to just say how I've had such good relationships with all the departments out there. When I have a question or a problem, they have been good about it. Bob has been trying to help me step into the 21st century with electronics, and it is working. But I especially want to mention Mr. Gast and Mr. Tompkins because I'm constantly bombarding them with situations, and they've been going out of their way to it. We can't always correct the situation, which is, you know, just what it is. But they've been great about at least giving me an answer, and I can go back and tell the person why we cannot do it or when it will get done. But anyway, just I wanted to thank everyone for being here.
All right, good. And I want to end with a few things. Heritage Park Festival for Flora Home was well-attended last Saturday. Commissioner Pickens came by, and wonderfully, we can't be everywhere, so we all know that. This is a big county and a lot of things happening. But it was well-attended, and a lot of people there for their, and I often, I told people around there, if that old ground could talk about what it's been through in the last 100 years, it would be encouraging. There is a meeting I want to bring to your attention. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection has asked me to make you aware and the public aware of a meeting for the Division of Recreation and Parks. This is concerning the opportunity for a public to provide input on a 10-year management plan to update the Marjory Harris Carr Cross Florida Greenway State Recreation and Conservation Area. It'll be Tuesday, November 14th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Ravine Gardens State Park. So if you're in town and can make that meeting at the Ravine Gardens, and Tony, I'll give you a copy of this for the record. Okay? And last thing I want to do, I want to thank, you know, sometimes the newspaper doesn't get it right, but I want to tell you a story that happened. Friday's paper came out and misquoted me about me referring to southern women and a glass ceiling. That was told to me by Mrs. Puphill and Ms. Allen in a meeting, and that's why I went to Mr. Manning to voice my concerns that they felt that they might have that issue. I sent an email to Mr. Brandon Oliver and to Wayne Knuckles and got a response from Scott Bryan and Mr. Oliver apologizing for misrepresenting that comment, and they did a correction the next day. So Brandon, I want to say to you publicly, thank you for reaching out to me, and your apology wasn't necessary, but it was very much appreciated. And we just wanted to clear that up. I did make notice in my email to them that none of us should be, even if it was a male feeling like they were slighted, they have a right to come to us and voice their concerns. So again, Brandon, and please go back and thank Mr. Bryan for me. I wanted to do that publicly, okay? So if there's any other business, this meeting will stand adjourned. Thank you.